My bell after two and a half minutes to let you know that you're getting close to your time. After the public comment is over, we check the chat function will be turned off to allow all of us to devote our full attention to the meeting. Okay, so I see that Charlie is first in the chat and I'm getting my timer ready so that we can give everybody their fair time. So Charlie, you may go ahead. Thank you so much for joining us.
My name is Charlie Gendron. I'm a senior here at Manchester Essex and I would just like to voice my opinions on fall sports, specifically golf. I am a captain of the golf team and me, the other captain Sean Gill have been working at Essex County Club and playing there throughout the pandemic. We can assure you that it's very safe and it's done at a socially distant manner because we have that we've been through golf in the heat of the pandemic, not just as it's cooling down as it is now. As a captain, I recognize it is my responsibility and my duty to make sure that all of the players are following the guidelines and staying safe. And that is what we will be focusing on as captains. We will make sure that everyone does their part to make sure that all sports can be played. Another point that I have for golf is it's a lot of the other sports can be moved to the fall season, but golf cannot. There is no way that golf can be played in timeframe of the fall two season that the courses won't be open and it'll be too cold. And I think that fall sports in general, not just golf, are great extracurriculars and are important to the overall well being of students. Where we're not going to be seeing each other face to face throughout the school day, it is very important that we have our outlets such as fall sports in order to get that time. The Parks and Rec department is comfortable running town sports and other Parks and Rec. Activities. So really if a high school fall sport season isn't played, then the high school students will be the only students who have an opportunity to have extracurricular activities. Thank you very much.
Charlie. Okay, that was great. And then next we have Jack Roberts.
Hi, my name's Jack Roberts. I'm a senior in Manchester Essex and I've been playing, I play three sports. So I play, I run track in the winter, I'm the captain of varsity soccer team along with Tommy Emerson and Finn, and I play tennis in the spring. So I just wanted to touch on a few things and kind of my experience in sports and why this season is so important. Even in the light of everything that's going on. So I mean, I've been playing soccer under Manchester Essex since I was six or seven. I've been playing with the same people and it's kind of built towards this pinnacle. That's the senior year. And I really want to emphasize that we were actually just moved down in a division. And so I think, and that's kind of opened up this opportunity for us to to take the program to a place that it actually hasn't ever been before. And I think going off that, I want to just talk about what soccer and sports in general give me and I think give other people. And so first of all, you can't really get a better emotional kind of outlet than playing sports and playing with other people, not only because it's a social activity, but also because it's, it does something for me at least that I can't really get anywhere else. And that's why I know I'm going to continue playing sports in college as much as I can because there's something about the competition that I think gives me this like a little, it's like a, it's like a little victory every day to have a practice. And it keeps my confidence up and keeps me motivated and and that correlates with my grades very directly. I mean, in the seasons that I've been injured or seasons that I haven't ended up playing for whatever reason, my grades have actually taken a hit. And so I've there's just that reason as well. And then finally, there's the teamwork aspect of it and the teamwork is just something that
It isn't.
The teamwork aspect is something that these are the only people that I'm seeing are my teammates. And I've made friends from all different grades, people that I would never ever have talked to before. People that are now in college, I still talk to people that are two years younger than me that I talk to. And so I think to take all of that away. And even, even though the MIA, MIA has set guidelines that obviously we would need to follow down to the letter. And but I think to take all that away would be absolutely devastating. So.
Thank you, Jack. That was great. And then I'm sorry, I skipped Lily Athenas. Lily, would you like to go next?
Hi, my name is Lily Athenas. I live in Manchester and I'm a senior three sport captain. I'm speaking on behalf of my teammates on the field hockey team. First, I want to thank the school committee members for their dedication and hard work, especially during these times when lots of really hard decisions are being made. Tonight, I would like to urge the committee to vote to adopt the MIA recommendations and allow us to participate in fall sports. Athletics are an integral part of high school, of the high school experience and provide so many positive opportunities, which we need more than ever right now. Sports provide us with a sense of connectedness and social interaction. Being part of a team creates important relationships, allowing students to meet some of their best friends and chances to interact with peers and people who they wouldn't normally see. Being on a sports team would be an impactful benefit to students in terms of their social and emotional wellness as well, especially because we can't be in the building. Playing a sport also helps boost morale as many students are feeling uneasy with the new situation that we need to adopt to. And sports will give us much more structure, motivation, dedication, and something to look forward to. Another opportunity that playing a sport provides for athletes is a physical outlet. Students are going to need as much physical stimulation as possible, given that we will be staying in our houses for most of the day. School sports are the safest way to provide this, given all the regulations that we need to follow. Practices and games have been the best part of my day, every day since freshman year, and I just really don't want that to change this year. We're willing to take every precaution necessary to keep everyone healthy. We just want to play for these reasons and so many more that I'm not going to list for the sake of time. We urge the school committee to allow MIRHs athletes to participate in fall sports. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lily. Maddie Lawler. Yes, you're perfect. I can hear you fine.
Okay, so I'm Maddie Lawler and I'm a two sport athlete captain. And I'm advocating for the girls soccer team. And so just like keeping it short and sweet, the entire girl soccer team, we've been playing all summer, three days a week. We've been practicing in the mornings and everyone's been following the MIA guidelines so far. And there's been no transmission, transmissions of any COVID cases. But I think like, everyone on the team has been like aware and has we, like us captains have written out or read out the guidelines for this coming season and everyone's prepared and they know what they're getting themselves into this coming season and like what they have to do in order to make sure the season stays safe. So everyone's ready for it, ready to go. And we've been using the guidelines the whole summer. And I think that we all can understand the argument that can be made for every athlete, but I think also everyone, every athlete has a very personal reason as to why this season's extremely like important for them to play. And Phil first's email was amazing and like highlighted all the points that relates to every single athlete, but like on a personal level, like for me, last season I tore my ACL, so I've been working for nine months to get back to the season and get ready to play again. And for it to be all for nothing, especially being a senior, that would be really heartbreaking for me. And I know that everyone has very personal reasons as to why they really want to play this season more than ever. Because of just what we've been through for these past couple of months. And if we're, if we're able to play and the MIAA has given us a go and provided guidelines to let us practice these soccer sports.
Maddie, thank you so much. That was great. And then along the topic of sports, I believe there's a call in who was not able to access the chat who wants to address sports as well. Is that true? Was there somebody else who wanted to participate by making a public comment, but who wasn't able to get into the chat, but it wasn't about sports? Okay, then, um, thank you so much for all the students who called in. I think that was it for students unless somebody else joins. That was really great to hear from you. And next, Jake Foster was Jake and Chris, Chris, sorry, Jake and Carla were waiting to speak. My timer's going off. Okay, Jake, you're up. Thank you.
Our comments focus on the upcoming process for developing school committee goals. We understand that the district will be re-engaging in the vision of a graduate process soon. We encourage you to include a strong focus on district curriculum and instruction outcomes in school committee and superintendent goals in order to support this work. Two examples highlight the need for school committee focus on curriculum and instruction to achieve any new outcomes. One, increasing opportunities for student collaboration. We know the decision to go to a remote model was a difficult one, but we appreciate you did so in part to allow students the opportunity to collaborate and work in diverse modes that being in person during COVID would not allow for. Small group collaboration is critical to learning to work together, being responsible for our learning and actions and interacting respectfully. We were surprised then to hear that the school has implemented a school-wide practice Essex Elementary. A school-wide practice where there must be a staff person present with every student group. This will severely limit small group collaborative learning opportunities. Aren't students able to work together in small groups without direct supervision? We have seen this in past years. Second, adjusting the district's emphasis on literacy and math. We were hopeful that remote learning would provide a more balanced approach to subjectory instruction each day. The complex cultural, historical and technical nature of our world has been on full display this year, a world our students have to be able to navigate. Upon receiving our fifth grade, our son's fifth grade schedule, however, we saw once again five blocks a day of literacy and math out of seven. This is the same schedule our son will now have had for six years. Social studies and science continue to be taught only two blocks per week. Why does this focus on literacy and math continue into the upper elementary grades? What does this convey to our students about the world we are preparing them for? Over the six years of elementary school, students will have been scheduled into approximately 4,000 hours of literacy and math and only 1,500 hours of other subjects combined, including all specials. This raises some important questions for district leadership. For example, is this what we need to prepare our children for the complex social, cultural, historical, artistic and technical world that we live in and that they will eventually be stewards of? As students approach middle school, how does the elementary schedule and curriculum shift to ensure preparation and continuity across all subjects? Can we achieve reasonable literacy and math outcomes in less than 70% of the school day? Will the new literacy curriculum take any less time than the schedule? Both examples represent district leadership decisions that should have school committee input and oversight. We feel that it is important that there are school committee and superintendent goals focused on outcomes and impacts that will result from changes in programming in light of any new vision. The visioning effort you're about to undertake will likely lead to, if that will likely, excuse me, if that visioning effort will lead to any substantive change, it needs goals that are not about just timelines and events to define a process. Outcome and impact goals need to be there to ensure that district policies, programming and practices enable the achievement of a new vision for our students. We are excited about the upcoming visioning process and to participate in it. We offer our support and assistance with the hope that changes will lead to enhanced learning experiences and preparation for today's worlds. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And we're going to be addressing goals later in the meeting. So thank you for speaking to that. And tomorrow, I believe is in the chat.
And I'm telling you that I am really glad to see that hybrid transition indicators is listed on our agenda for tonight or later on the meeting. I'm really excited to hear what you guys have discussed and decided. And I speak for many parents who are quite interested specifically with regards to the youngest learner. My five-year-old and my seven-year-old, who we love to see on less screens compared to more screens. So thank you. I look forward to it.
Okay. Thanks, Tamara. Sorry. And then I just, I just caught wind that Nan Gordon is also waiting to speak. Nan, did you want to try again? Nan, are you out there?
Is she on the phone or she, I don't see her on our list.
She's on the phone, I think. I, in the chat, it says Nan Gordon wants to try and speak one more time. She's on the phone.
Can somebody give me her last two digits? She was probably muted when we had some of that noise.
Ah, yes. Can you, can Nan put, send that to Phil? Two, two, one, one.
All right, let's try it now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yay. Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you so much. This is Nan Gordon. I'm the girls varsity lacrosse coach for the school. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on behalf of the coaches tonight. This is an exciting time for Manchester Essex. And in fact, I really think it's a powerful time for us, for all of us, for the parents, the school committee members, administrators, teachers, coaches and even the student athletes. We have an opportunity to ask a few questions, not only how do we turn this situation into a positive, which we've all been trying to do for many months. But we also have the opportunity to reflect and ask, are we accomplishing what we are seeking to accomplish by offering sport as part of our extended curriculum? We invest a lot of time into sport. So is our investment working? Is sport a vehicle to teach life lessons? And can this be another perfect moment to teach more? I'm always trying to teach life at my practices, my games and in my season overall. I'm very clear with the girls that lacrosse is a way to learn many life lessons. And I would venture a guess that that's what most coaches are trying to do. We're trying to create an environment for kids to become happy, healthy, smart, thoughtful and contributing members to their team and this community. We talk a lot about representing Manchester Essex when we're playing the sport, how you hold yourself in a game. And how you talk to referees, how you talk to opponents. We coaches and our team represent our community. So what better way to represent Manchester Essex than by coming out on the field at this moment and holding ourselves to the highest standard possible? The guidelines set out for COVID are clear and they can be successfully followed. And I can't think of anything better than to see this life lesson in action. Again, here's our powerful moment. I have worked with these student athletes and I've seen that they can and should be asked to take this responsibility. This is their moment to give back to the community. It's their moment to show everyone that they are learning the lessons of life through sport and the investment has been worth it. I am so, I and so many other coaches are happy that we are seriously considering letting them play. I do not see any reason not to. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. All right, so I believe that is, I think that's it for public comment. And that's good because we are well over our 20 minutes, but I wanted to make sure that everybody got a chance. Well, we're only two minutes over our 20 minutes, so it's not that bad. Okay, so moving on with the meeting and I have a short chairman's report for tonight, September 15. I want to welcome everyone who's joining us. Thanks to all the student athletes who came. And also I wanted to give a special thank you to Maddie, Emerson, Sean and Charlie, who all wrote very passionate and articulate letters to the school committee advocating for their fall sports teams. And we are looking forward to hearing from Mr. Edget and Ms. Puglisi later in this meeting and we will be discussing fall sports further. It was a really exciting week this week as students were welcomed to schools to meet their teachers and pick up their supplies. We are starting the year in remote learning and I really hope that the district is able to offer more opportunities for students to get together for these in-person experiences over the next few weeks so that we can get the most out of our outside spaces during this fall weather. Tomorrow will be the first day of school and whether students are learning from home, from school or from the Y program, I hope that they all have a great first day. Of course, we know that it won't be perfect. So if you are having a hard time, please don't hesitate to reach out to your classroom teacher, the newly established parent help desk or other appropriate personnel for help. And we all just want to work together to make it a successful first day for everyone. And moving on, we have a consent agenda.
The consent agenda with the minutes of nine, 1:20.
I'm going to, I'm going to aim from the minutes because I only just got them an hour or so ago and haven't had a chance to read them. They weren't in the packet.
All right, do I have a second for the consent agenda? Any discussion on the consent agenda or the minutes other than Shannon's abstention?
I was gonna say, can I also change just because I haven't had a chance to catch those?
Why don't we just push the minutes from September 1st to the next meeting since not everybody had a chance to read them? Okay, so we are looking at just the acceptance of the warrant. Any discussion on the warrants? All right, so roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Annie? Shannon?
Yes.
Matt? Ken? Ken, do you accept the warrant?
I do accept the warrant. Apologies.
Excellent. Thank you. Teresa made the motion and I, yes, accept the warrant. So consent agenda passes. And then do we have subcommittee reports? My agenda says no report, but does anybody, facilities, finance have policy?
I don't, did we have a meeting, Pam? We might've had a meeting.
He did last, what was it, Tuesday?
Yeah, nothing to report on time, on budget. We're good.
Yeah, he did the indicator, some of the indicator worked, so that's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah. But it was about facilities though. Did we have a school building committee meeting? I thought we did. And everything's good.
Yeah, it was quick.
So finance committee talked about the indicators and we're going to, we're going to talk about that later. Policy committee didn't meet, I don't think. Okay, and negotiations didn't meet, but we have a meeting on the schedule for this upcoming week, I believe. I pass, pass it along to you, Pam.
Sure thing. Just give me one second. Okay, my report is brief tonight, but I start with a similar sentiment to you, Sarah. It was just amazing being able to look out over the field and take a ride by Memorial and Essex and see life on campus and happy kids running around and parents interacting with teachers and just life back in the bill, not in the buildings, but on the campus. So that was really uplifting this, this whole past week. And I think kind of inspirational for some of the work that's ahead. It's been great having teachers back in the building, pretty intense two weeks of training that we've, we've had. And I think people are feeling very prepared to launch on remote tomorrow. So I think a very enjoyable experience to be able to have the in-person meet and greets ahead of our launch of remote learning tomorrow. I would just offer the observation, while the remote model may not be what everybody wanted to start, I feel that we are in a very stable position in the region and we are very clear on what our mission is. We haven't had to spend the past 10 days reassessing and reorganizing our open. So we've, we have had our eye on the ball, to use a sports metaphor, and we know what we need to execute tomorrow. So I think there's a level of comfort in at least knowing that we haven't had to change plans in this stream. So looking forward to finally kicking things off tomorrow. Just a reminder to everyone, we're using what has been dubbed as the high flex model. And that's because for people who are watching with anticipation, we're going to make the move to hybrid. Our preparations beginning last March was to design a program that could easily toggle between both remote and hybrid, not knowing where we would be or what would become of us once we got started. So in the email I sent out to everybody today, there's a link to the summary of what that is, the presentations that we, Julie Riley had done over the summer that just summarize what, what the concept is between, behind high flex and what some of the resources or that we relied on to build it. To Jake's point, and that may just be an implementation glitch, misunderstanding, or just a bug we have to work out. But I want to reiterate that from the outset, our intent is to provide a structured synchronous day, but to combine our best practices that we would use in live instruction. And that includes a combination of whole class instruction, teacher-led, small group and independent student work. So we can, you know, hopefully we can solve the, the issue where the glitch or the misinterpretation that's taking place currently. But we have every intention and it has been part of the discussion and training, how to best use these online tools to move what we know works with kids into the virtual world. So that's
Pam, can I interrupt you for a second?
You can.
I think it's great that people can multitask, but if the person who has the cell phone number ending in nine, three could mute, that would be fantastic.
Yes, that's you.
I've, I've muted them. Sorry, just, I can't multitask and do that, but they're all set now. So anyway, that's just a summary of the learning model. We posted that up on our remote learning resource page along with links to the details. And I'm not going to read everything to people, but we're really excited that this afternoon, our MRSD parent help desk went live. And that will be up and running tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m. You can certainly email them in the overnight hours and they will tag your tickets and put you in a queue and you will get a response back either by phone or by email. We tried to put the warning sign that you might get it by phone and you may not recognize the number. I know a lot of people don't answer anymore if the number isn't recognizable. But know that we are sharing the number with you in case you see this come across your caller ID. It'll be from Access Computer Networks. They are our partner that is running the help desk for us. They're out of new report. And they'll be able to help you troubleshoot typical problems that you find that you may come across in your home. And our goal there is, we may not be able to provide 100% uptime in your, in your house, but we want to make sure that the tools we're using are accessible so that kids can access the curriculum. So we're here to assist in any way we can. So many thanks to the tech team for pulling that together. Avi and Julie worked as a team on that process and it's, it's there to support us. We also have our grab and grow lunches, breakfast and lunches available. Starting tomorrow, it'll be available between 10 and 12 at the middle high school or out front at Essex. It will be a drive up. You can drive up and pick up either daily or pick up for the week if you prefer. To get started, you aren't going to need to phone in an order. They've done some estimates based on how we were running last year and they'll make adjustments as we go forward. And they'll be looking to publish a weekly menu once we get started. These meals will also be available to the Y program. So kids there can have easy access to meals as well as lunch will be provided to the in-person program for anyone who would like it. I think what's important to stress on the, on the lunch program is that anyone who is in need of a meal or wants a meal is currently eligible to come and pick one up. They've expanded the school lunch program during COVID, knowing that people have maybe in a different position than they were when they started, but yet may not technically qualify for free and reduced lunch. So we just, so there's a government effort and a local effort to ensure that anyone who needs the support, it's there for you. Please just pop by and we'll have people out front, ready to help you out. And just two other quick points. We're very thankful to the Y. I know there's been a little confusion over the past few days with, is there enough space in the program? And the answer is yes. I want anybody who's listening tonight who has any doubt or knows anybody who may have gotten an email and finds themselves confused. We are maxed out for space at Essex Elementary. But we are preparing to open the middle high school site, which will have, I think, double But we are preparing to open the middle high school site, which will have, I think, double the capacity. Of Essex Elementary. So I know we can service everybody who is on the waitlist currently. What is up in the air is whether we can start it this week or if it has to wait until Monday. And there are two, two things that are driving. The date for reopen. One is the um, finalization of permitting. So Essex Elementary, because uh, the Y had a relationship with us prior and ran programs out of Essex Elementary. That site and a program in the, at that site had already been licensed by um, early childhood and the Y. Oversight branch. The middle high school is a fine facility and it won't have any trouble, but they are backed up. So I think we're going to get our permits all set by tomorrow and then they're also working on uh, continuing to hire staff. I know we've talked about staffing as a concern going forward. And making sure there's enough available qualified staff. They are doing their best and I think they feel like they're on track, but they've been do, you know, they're, they're at it every single day. So. It takes a little time sometimes to uh, close the loop on a hire and get everybody's background check completed before they can open. But in a nutshell, YMCA has capacity for all of our kids. There may be a delay in the start time if you were on the waitlist to start and you'll be hearing more from them as we go forward. One other thing, if you're participating in the Y program, just a reminder, um, and I know this was going, going to go out and writing to everyone. Please bring your school materials and your devices. They are going to be set up and they're to help facilitate the remote learning day. Uh, for students who are participating. Um, and then just a closing comment, independent and remote learning options and homeschool. That's still available. Uh, there is no deadline to switch to that if that's your preference. I know uh, we've been able to make contact with everybody who was in the queue. And we did make a conscious decision to make sure we had all our ducks in a row for kids who were starting in uh. The M E R S D program uh, that was tied to this, to this, the day schedule. The remote learning and homeschool, I'm sure all those uh, formalities will be completed this week. I know I spoke, spoke with Shelley and Julie. Over the past couple of days and they feel like the paperwork flow is moving a little bit better now. But if you go to our uh, reentry page, uh, Fall Reentry twenty twenty. There's a link to the remote learning page and links to all of these resources are there. And if you have trouble finding it, just send me an email and we'll get you. A direct link. So. Conclusion of the report, we are ready for tomorrow. We're excited to get started and we're excited to continue to build forward um, to the hybrid. Thanks, everyone.
Welcome. Okay, Fall Athletics Planning Update is up.
We can.
Is Trish here too?
I am here, yeah. Why don't I start off with the first two slides and then we'll bump to all athletics and then to extracurriculars? Pam, could you bring us the next slide? Um, so tonight we just wanted to talk about the purpose of why we're here in terms of um, why we're talking about adding athletics and extracurricular. Opportunities for our students while we are in a remote educational environment and. Really, we have a deep down belief and we heard it from Charlie and Lily and Maddie and Jack earlier today. About the connection to their school community and everything else that they get out of participating in athletics. That goes the same for. For the other extracurriculars as well. So um, you know, kids really do have that connection to the school and they also have a connection to. Adults that they truly um, trust and um, are able to learn and use as mentors. Students, although some have the opportunity to play club sports, um, at the end of the day, they really have a desire to play for their school and wear their colors. In terms of extracurriculars, students really crave the opportunity to meet with students that have common interests, to discuss, to perform, to create. And at the end of the day, um, it's the social interaction and mental health that we're um, most concerned with, with providing these opportunities for kids. Um, I just wanted to go back to our decision to go remote. Um, when we presented and made the decision for the high school to go remote. We were talking about the um, financial impact of the district and a remote model. And we're also talking about um, our class, classroom sizes in the high school are very small. And to be able to create a hybrid model was challenged by the size of the classrooms and. We were concerned that we would have to cut out part of our program and there was a desire to offer our complete program of studies. Which is why we ended up being remote at the high school level. And I'm gonna put it over to um, Jordan for athletics and I'll come back for extracurriculars.
He is, I think he's muted.
I, I was muted.
Oh.
Start over. Um, so we would open up registration tomorrow morning, first thing. Um, we close it Sunday night at midnight. Due to the fact that it's a shorter season, we need to get things up and running. Um, so no late registrations will be accepted. Practices and tryouts begin on Monday. Um, and the season will go into about the beginning of November, um, depending on the sport. We'd have a Cape Ann League competition only. No teams are playing against non-league opponents. Cape Ann League schools are all strictly adhering to the same guidelines and procedures. The, the DESI and M I A guidelines were all a minimum standard. So we've added some things that are specific to the league and specific to Manchester Essex. So it's important to note that, you know, the M I A standards were just the minimum standard. So since two weeks ago, not a whole lot has changed in terms of the structure of the season. Um, we're looking at four to five practices per team. Uh, five or six days per team. Um, cross country has one meet a week. Um, that's on Thursdays. Golf uh, varies depending on the availability of the courses. Uh, we're looking at ten matches for, for golf and ten games for varsity. Uh, soccer and field hockey. The sub varsity teams will play about eight to ten games, depending on the amount of schools um, that have those teams. So for cross country and golf, you'll notice the postseason will be revisited um, on ten fifteen. So basically right now, the guidelines. Say that um, you can only have dual meets or dual competitions, so only two teams. Um, in the past, we've had Cal opens or Cal invitationals where all teams across the league will, will meet together at one location. Uh, and compete and those are against the guidelines right now. Um, so we're, we explore options. You know, in October, given the state of where we'll be. Uh, field hockey and soccer will have a two-game postseason. Essentially, it would be the first seat of the Baker will play the two seat of the Kinney. Um, and then the one seat of the Kinney will play the two seat of the Baker. That will happen the first two weeks of, of November. Um, so we're looking at some September twenty first up until at latest, November fourteen. So the recommendations that the athletic directors um, set to the principals, which were approved, um, and we're recommending these to you. The one-strike policy, so if we notice a student or a coach who are not adhering to the guidelines, they're intentionally being disrespectful. Um, not wearing their mask, they will be done. Um, that message has already been sent to um, the coaches. We've already had a coaches meeting. They understand the guidelines and what's at stake. I've also opened up a public um, forum at Zoom for the students last week. As you heard from our four leaders today, uh, those seniors, we have great student leaders. They're, they understand exactly what they're up against right now. They lost a lot this past spring. Um, so you know, they're, they know exactly what's at stake here. So I, I fully trust that. They adhere to the guidelines. My, my job responsibilities in the past, I, I'm at every single varsity game. This fall, I will be at Highland Field pretty much from three o'clock until the last minute of um, practice or, or game to hold coaches and students accountable. So the ADs decided that we will start the season with no fans. We're gonna revisit that after the first week. We wanna kind of get this up and running to make sure we can do it safely and effectively. We're thinking of it as kind of like a phase one and a phase two approach, somewhat to how the state has run. So phase two would be opening up to. To parents and, and families. Um, and this would be based off of the state guidelines. And I know that there are some families that probably aren't happy to hear um, of the no fan policy, but we'll be providing a live stream. Program for all the games. We'll have all the games on Highland Field um, to begin. Um, so even some varsity games will have some sort of live stream. Cross country and golf as well. I'll be out there on the course. Um, to make sure that families have the ability to watch um, their sons or daughters compete. Coach's education, again, I've already spoken to them. They're aware of what the, what's expected of them. They're, they're required to take the COVID nineteen NFHS uh, course. And we're also providing them with a course from our, uh, a video or instruction from Cindy, our nurse. User fees, we, we are not changing the user fees. We're recommending to keep them the, the same. We'll talk about budget in a second, but we're trying to minimize the added costs so that we uh, can make fall sports happen. Refund policy. Um, obviously, we're taking this day by day. It's a very fluid situation. So if fall sports are canceled on ten fifteen or beforehand, families will receive a fifty percent refund. If it's can't canceled after ten fifteen, then they will not receive a refund. Or if a student is removed from a team, they will not receive a refund. We've worked on the athletic training room. Um, if you've ever been in that room, it's a no windows, very. Muggy, hot room. It goes against every guideline um, that we have in place. So we're, we're moving that into a temporary, into the cardio room. Um, we'll keep the door open. There's gonna be a tent outside. It's a big room. Um, we've mapped it out where tables will be um, plenty distance apart. Um, so it's safe and efficient. We don't have to worry about any kids um, going through the, the current trainer's room. Here's the budget. Um, we, we, the transportation was the biggest one, um, since we can only have thirteen kids on the bus. So we're working on staggered starts. Um, soccer will be played on the weekends. So we're trying to minimize the transit, transportation costs. There's also other alternatives to minimize the costs as well that we're still working on. But the goal is to make it as close to um, even as, as past years. Um, next one, so golf, basically it doesn't change at all since we have only twelve students on the team. Twelve max, and that's because of the uh, limitations that we have um, at Essex Country Club and Sun and Air. So transportation does not double for, for golf, um, like it does for other sports. It's important to note to cross country, um, it depends on the number of students that sign up. So typically we have around ten to thirteen kids per team. If we do get, you know, eighteen to twenty, we would have to do staggered starts or potentially double the amount of buses. So that's contingent on that as well.
Jordan, I think I was, for some reason I can't find the slide for soccer and golf. So I just have cross country and field hockey and then we go to. This soccer estimated slide. So I don't know if I messed you up by not having the right things.
That's alright. I got a slideshow in, in front of me as well too. Um. We'll be, so playing on Saturdays, we'll have extra custodial fees. So that um, is part of the added costs. We're minimizing equipment and supplies to only the necessary. Purchases. Um, we're not gonna be painting the field lines an extra coat because we, the kids weren't on it in the spring and the summer. So. Um, it wasn't worn down as much. So there are cost-saving measures that we can have in place as well in addition to the added costs that we have.
Either help me with dinner?
Pam, you can go to the next slide.
Alright.
The next one. So it's important to note, um, the M I A has been working um, on these guidelines for months now. They've consulted with DESI. Doctors, public health officials, state officials um, for months. They formed the COVID task force. There are thousands of eyes that are on these guidelines, uh, eyes that are way more qualified than mine. And they deem these guidelines safe for communities that are in areas um, like ours, unshaded. They deem them safe to play. Um, these guidelines and modifications are very thorough. I know that you've got, you've all gone through them. I wouldn't go through each bullet point. We'd be here for three hours. But they're very detailed and thorough. Um, they'll be shared with families as well. So everyone understands what's expected of them. It's also important to note, if we don't. Offer sports, students will join AU programs, club programs. They'll be traveling across the state. And they'd be playing with different guidelines. Um, I feel a lot more comfortable myself, um. Overseeing this program, making sure that everyone's held accountable to these guidelines rather than going off throughout the state. New Hampshire has been a popular spot for teams to travel to, um, potentially increasing the exposure. So since March, we've, we've always, we've all been facing many challenges and struggles. I think it's safe to say that everyone on this call has dealt with something. Myself included. You know, we go through the mantra, we teach students that, you know, be kind to, to everyone. You don't know what they're dealing with. The difference this year with the pandemic, we, the pandemic took away our outlets. My outlet has always been athletics. Um, I would be absolutely lost if I lost a season. So I, um, dozens of students feel the same way um, as I do. If they lose their season, they'll, they'll be completely lost. Mental health is a huge issue. Um, it's, it was an issue beforehand with this generation. A generation that was born into the technology age, um, with social media. The sports, having sports, having extracurricular activities will, could provide them with that outlet that they've missed. It is so needed with these students. Um, like I need it, I think parents need it. If we consider athletics as an extension of the classroom, we, we can't, it's in our philosophy. It's in the M I A's philosophy. We, we can't go remote. So we really need to look at, you know, how we operate and um, you know, abide by our philosophies. I understand we, you know, if someone uh, contracts the virus, we, we see that number. But what we don't see are the, the dozens of students that are currently um, dealing with mental health. And. That can last for years uh, throughout their life. Uh, so again, providing these opportunities for students. Athletics, the other co-curricular activities um, can be huge for their mental health. I think it's more important for us to focus on mental health. In a, in a situation in an area where we're deemed safe by the state. And if, if a student were to test positive, um, we'd be working with the Board of Health. We'd contact them and we would. Adhere to everything that they would um, tell us in terms of contact tracing. This slide, if you can see the squares, those squares are supposed to be stars. All the other Cape Ann League schools have athletics. They've already approved athletics. Kentucky, um, they're, I believe they're meeting tonight, but they've already approved as well. Lynnfield's in a holding pattern. They previously, um, they approved. But then they got pushed to the red area. So um, they're, they're waiting to see if they're able to move to the yellow. Or unshaded region to be able to play. So they're in a holding pattern to potentially um, start playing in the beginning of October. So. If we vote no, we would be the only Cape Ann League school that is not playing sports. Also, an important note, uh. If a student, if a parent, if a family disagrees with me, um, they can choose to not play, to not register. Um, I think families deserve that right to make that decision. Um, so I think we should give them that decision.
Got it.
Got it.
So I just don't want this conversation to end with just athletics because there's so many more things that all of our students, our athletes and all of our students are involved with, and that's other extracurricular activities. So outside of the MIA, DESE came up with guidance around extracurricular activities. And they are asking us to have those school competitions to be held virtually, which makes sense in many ways because things like DECA Debate, Math, Science Team, those are hundreds of kids inside competing. So they're easily moved to a virtual platform and the majority of these groups have already made that move. We'd like to have the opportunity for groups and clubs to come into our parking lots to meet socially distanced outdoor just to have that kind of face-to-face contact to talk about whatever it is the students' passion is. DESE is not allowing indoor performances at this time. But they are allowing outdoor performances in limited fashion. A number of guidelines that we will look, look to pursue for things like bands, sound waves, chorus, and/or maybe even drama. I just wanted to show this slide, like this is a sampling, it's not even all of the groups and clubs that we have. But this is a sampling of the interests that our students have. These are where their passions lie, and they really need to have the opportunity to have these group meetings either virtually or outside to really maintain their connection to their peers and to their schools. And again, this is kind of repeating what I've already said, but we're looking at for a lot of our groups having virtual intraschool competition. Club meetings in our upper parking lot, we're going to, we look to create a system for kind of signing out that space after school. And then an option for outdoor performances and virtual performances for both drama and music. Also, also the visual arts, maybe creating a virtual display of student work. And I think that's what we have for tonight. Again, I want to, I want to thank the kids for speaking, and I also want to thank Jordan. When this first came up as a local decision, my first, I sent him a long email with a million questions of, oh my God, are you kidding, what about, what about, what about, what about, what about? And the athletic directors and the Cape Anne League did a really great job of answering many of the principals' questions. So it's very appreciated.
Thank you, Tricia, and thank you, Jordan. And I know that there are some school committee questions. But beginning with, is Avi here and can he speak to the sports athletics budget?
Yes, I'm here, and hi. Actually, let me turn on my video to my, hang on. So we talked about budget today, and I think one of the things we discussed is that first, there is some uncertainty of how this will play out, but I think the team did a very good job to analyze and estimate what they thought some of the perceived impacts could be. And, you know, I will start by saying that I've been very impressed since Jordan's been on board with his, you know, ability to dive into the budget and to, to take accountability and responsibility for that. And I know he works very closely with Tricia, who does the same. And so I think that's gone well, and it's clear that they're thinking about that. I think if you looked at the numbers that were in the slides, they showed that some costs are going to go up, some are going to go down. Clearly, transportation, I think, is the wild card for a couple of those sports where you saw those numbers are going to be a little higher, although that would be potentially offset by fewer games. So I think knowing that there's a lot of unknowns still, at this point, it seems like we have a reasonable shot of it not being significantly financially more costly. Maybe a little bit more costly, maybe roughly break even to where we've been. So I think compared to a lot of the other things that we're looking at with remote and hybrid, I would say this budget seems to be in a better situation, to be perfectly honest. But I think we're still going to have to watch and see what happens with, with, you know, enrollment and how that goes.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So what I'm seeing is a deficit on soccer of 1,500 and of transportation on field hockey of 3,000. Is that, is that the sum total of the shortfall? And I know that there are times when we, or there's, I think every year, we have some portion of the general budget that goes towards athletics. So I imagine that these budget, this, this budget, these budget things are not really showstoppers.
The added cost.
Go ahead, Jordan, you first.
So field hockey has the highest added cost for transportation, and that's because they're playing on Fridays. Soccer's on Saturdays because, mainly because there's two teams, boys and girls. So we had staggered starts on weekends to limit the transportation numbers. So that's why you see field hockey higher than soccer.
Thank you. Does, what, does, do other people have, school committee people have questions for Jordan or Tricia?
I do.
Of course you do.
Yeah, so I, I just, I want to circle back with Avi on the budget question. So it doesn't seem like these are, these are not going to be anything that, the numbers are not going to be something that prevents us from going forward with this, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There are other things, like I said, that have kept me awake a lot more, and this is looking to be in a reasonable position, given the uncertainty.
I'm sure there's a lot that keeps you awake at night, Avi. Okay, so Jordan, I sent you a message. My concerns are about mask wearing, I want it all the time. And I wanted to know if you could talk to us a little bit about the role of referees and how they'll uphold the league rules relative to COVID safety.
It will be strictly required. Again, the one-strike policy, if kids are disrespecting and not adhering to the guidelines, they will be removed.
I'll let it stop here.
Yeah, so it's a strict policy for referees. We will be adhering to the MIA DESI's guidelines. So if a student were to approach or get closer than six feet, they're going to get a yellow card or a red card. And then if, if referees are not adhering to the guidelines, we work with the signers who hire these referees to ref our games. So we would be reporting to them if they're not strictly adhering to these guidelines.
Good to know. Who's going to be managing spectators if and when they come? Because I know that if you're going to say no spectators, they're still going to line that damn fence. So how is that going to be managed?
That'll be me. Yeah, that'll be me, I'll be at every game. We'll be playing sub varsity and varsity games at Island Field. So I'll, I'll be patrolling the fences, the stands will be locked up to make sure that nobody's at the games.
Okay, I'm going to get you a badge. And then I guess my final question is, or not a question, it's just a statement. And I just want any, every one of our coaches to know that we are not messing around with this. This is serious, and I saw stuff on the baseball field down the street from my house this summer that did not make me happy. So I just want everyone to understand, this is, this is a real deal. Keep people safe, follow the rules, and there's no exceptions. Because I, I am not confident this is going to work, but I'm trusting you.
I'll add that I, I trust Jordan tremendously. I, I would like to reserve the right to discuss or outlay some funds for detail if crowd management becomes too difficult. I also live near a large field complex, and it's kind of hard to keep people away. So I'm not really sure how we're going to manage that piece of it.
Yeah, so, so if that becomes an issue, you know, I don't want that coming out of the general fund. I don't think, you know, that the school district should suffer because people can't follow the rules. So maybe that's something that is a no, you know, that's a no-go. If we can't manage the, the process, then, then we don't do it. But we can visit that later.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to start with the assumption it's going to be an issue. I just want to be prepared to have supports in place, one person can't do it all.
Agreed, and there is a note in the, in the packet that Jordan sent out that says that the spectators are not allowed for the first weekend, and then they may be revisited. But I think it'd probably be, is there, is there any way to, if this, if we do get in, so we start without spectators, I guess. I wonder, is there, do we have any degree of controls, or what degree of controls do we have over the Manchester Essex fields? Or would, you know, in order to be able to, if the district does allow spectators and they're not, you know, I guess, do we have any local option on how we control or responsibility for that?
You mean other than the parents, people other than parents of the athletes?
Other than parents and/or the, am I, yeah, yeah, beyond, I don't even, there, it didn't clearly say who are, it said it just says fans may not attend competitions, I didn't see anything in there about parents. So I assumed fans means anybody other than the players and coaches, but I'm not quite sure on that.
Players and coaches only. Okay. I think it's.
Jordan, are we correct in thinking that?
Players and coaches only. Fans is any other individual, not wearing a uniform.
May I ask a question, clarification in the packet? I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead, sorry, sorry.
No, you go, no, go ahead, Shannon.
Jordan, in the packet, when you detailed the structure of the season, a number of items, postseason to be revisited on 10/15 for cross-country, a couple of post-seasons to be revisited here and there. Who's going to revisit that postseason decision? Is that the school committee, is that MIAA, is that, who's revisiting? I'm sorry, who, the athletic directors, Cape Anne League?
It would be Cape Anne League principals and athletic directors collaboratively.
I have a couple of questions. This is Teresa Women. One, in the packet, there was mention, but I didn't hear anything. So can you just clear the, the deck here on middle school athletics?
The question is, high school is our priority right now. And middle school will be revisited. If we have more information, we would provide that for you. So this is just strictly high school right now.
Okay, so right now, we're not looking at middle school, okay. And then the other question that I had was, a couple of students in letters and also in public comments tonight made, made mention about working over the summer and practices and scrimmages and things like that. And I, I wasn't aware that these things were, were underway and, and allowable at, over the summer. But the students themselves brought them up. So can someone speak to that a little bit? Help me understand what I missed over the, the regulations and the guidelines for the summertime.
We're not involved in any, any way, shape, or form with what happens over the summer. There are no captains, captains practices, but students can go off and get together if they would, if they choose to socially distance to get ready for a season. But it's, if they practice this summer, it has nothing to do with Manchester Essex Athletics.
Our private club teams that students participate on, and there are students who choose to just practice collaboratively during the summer, as is traditional. So I think that's what they were speaking to.
Okay, so, okay, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood in the letter. It sounded very clear about scrimmages, so I may have misunderstood that. Thank you for clarifying that. And then just one final thing, just to clarify, we're really only talking about one sport at, I mean, one season at a time here. This is, this is fall only, revisit for, for winter with a different set of conditions with indoor things, okay. And, and our vote, we don't need to vote on the extracurricular things, though, do we? Is this just, this is just specific to this, or Trish, maybe you could speak to that?
Advocate for extracurriculars in line with athletics because I think they go hand in hand. And I didn't want athletics to be the kind of focus. I think that all kids deserve that opportunity, and there's still a conversation of whether stipends will be paid for extracurricular advisors. And I am advocating for those stipends to be paid and for those activities to move forward.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate your help.
Need to vote on that, stipends, Pam?
No, we waited to post, typically, we would, we would have posted stipends in May of last year in preparation for this year, but not knowing whether we would be in-person, hybrid, or remote, and what activities would be allowed to go forward based on state guidance. We collectively decided with MITA that we would post only professional stipends for the beginning of the year, then revisit once you were up and running to see what stipends should be posted because you wouldn't offer a stipend if a club couldn't be run. So now that we're starting to have a picture of what can be offered and run, we'll put up the commensurate stipends.
I have a, just. No, it's Matt, sorry.
Sorry, Matt.
Yeah, that's okay. Can you guys just talk about cohorts for a second? You know, I saw one thing in, in the packet that had, you know, cross, cross-country said it was going to be in previously established cohorts. It seems like the seasons may potentially overlap with hybrid, which are different cohorts. And like, how, how is that being reconciled? Because they'd be in one cohort in school that are potentially a different cohort during practices and on teams.
Jordan, go on. Yeah, we're, all coaches, we're putting together cohorts for kids between five and 10 students per cohort. We'll have all coaches document all these cohorts from, you know, daily perspective, attendance for kids, contact tracing.
But I mean, are you, are you allowed to have kind of, because it seems like we, especially on the school level, we were trying to not intermingle cohorts, but this seems like, this seems like intermingling.
The social distance guidelines that the MIA and DESI has handed out, we're six feet apart, skills and drills in cohorts. So I, I trust the, the guidelines that these state officials and public health officials from DESI and.
I, I think I know what Matt's asking. Trish, maybe you can help, like, we don't have the kids coming into school every day, but Ipswich does. How do they keep it all separate?
Let me jump in for one sec. So a few things. Athletics is voluntary. Students are not required to participate in athletics or extracurriculars, whereas attending a hybrid school during the school day is something that, although it is somewhat voluntary, is more, they are required to follow their schooling. The other thing is, one thing I talked about with the principals and DPs is, I was more concerned, the Department of Education is making schools say, okay, they can just have sports, but remote schools need to vote on it. And that seems backwards to me in any ways because we're, the idea of students intermingling with other students, our kids aren't coming back into our school building and intermingling with other students and teachers, whereas the hybrid schools are. So I actually think we're in a good position here in terms of supporting the athletics and allowing the voluntary participation of kids out on the field outside of the building. That's another big difference, sports are outside, academics and hybrid are inside.
Doesn't the season potentially overlap with the start of hybrid, potentially? So if we got to a point where it would be going back into the building with different cohorts?
That's hot chocolate, yep.
Matthew, I, Matt, I completely hear you, and I think what the district is looking at is starting with the younger grades first. And we still have a concern at the high school level of our program being impacted at the hybrid model. And we'd really need to have some changes in the restrictions for us to really be able to offer our program and our full schedule for students at the high school level. I'm not speaking to the other levels at all.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Ken, I just, I wanted to just check up on some, Teresa had said, I, I just make a comment as well. So, this is Ken. I just, I wanted to just check up on some Teresa had said. I, I just make a comment as well. Jordan, Trish, and everybody, thank you for, this has been a lot of work going into this. And thank you kind of for taking the lead on kind of extracurriculars and athletics and really setting this. But to follow on with what, what Trish or what Teresa was asking about, this is really good. I commend all the students that spoke, everybody, all of the parents and on the community that's in support of the athletics. I just want to make sure that during the course of this season, it isn't, this isn't the minimum core that goes on. And then there's a bunch of unofficial stuff outside of that. So I just want to say really that this, this is really setting a good tone in terms of the leadership that Cape Ann League Athletics has done in terms of putting the rules together, coming out with, here's a way that we can interact. And I really hope that it goes off, it goes off well, and we don't have the issues of managing. And that it can be a good example, hey, here's how groups can work together going forward.
Jordan has said, and I just want to add in as principal of this high school, that any violation of the rules that have been set forth will be a shutdown of the program.
Yeah. So, and I guess I, I didn't see anything about captains practices or informal scrimmages and things, but are, are those in or out? Those, those aren't, it's just the, it's just the schedule of what was listed in the presentation?
Yeah, the high school via MIA rules is not allowed to have any interaction with students in off-season. So that would not have had anything to do with the high school.
But I guess when we are in season, can that go on still? Or does that go on? I don't know. Okay. Trish is shaking her head no. So thank, thank you for the great answers.
I just have to follow up on that one more time. This is really concerning to me, this line. Because I am inclined, my inclination is to allow what we can allow. If there are, if there are guidelines to, to make this safe and everything, but there has to be a level of trust that these are going to be followed. And I absolutely, I just revisited my email. I absolutely have an email from a student athlete advocating for, for us to approve the sports, specifically saying, we have already scrimmaged against multiple teams from different towns, and no player has shown any signs of falling ill yet. And I have had reports of captains practices all summer from multiple parents. I know this has happened. And so if nobody's owning what's already going on, I'm concerned moving forward.
But could you please explain summer programming?
I'm not talking about league, because this is specific to the, okay, thank you.
We don't have any offerings that are Manchester Essex Athletics from the Athletic Department. For, per MIA rules, there's no captains practices, there's no out-of-season coaching. Our coaches can't have contact with students until they want to fall sports. There's strength and conditioning program, which we do not offer. We did not offer this summer. So from our perspective, we did not have any contact with students. We did not have, offer any scrimmages in the games and programs. What they do with AU programs, clubs, youth programs, that's off on their own. So I'm assuming that's where that came from.
It didn't, I just, it didn't come, I mean, it's specific to this, this specific team. So, so I guess it's not, I don't want to argue that. But I, I just want to say, do you feel confident moving forward that your athletes, even saying that they've been doing this all summer, with regulations that we don't even, that aren't even supposed to be in place, will be able to follow these rules moving forward?
And with, with my oversight, the coaches oversight, what, coaches know exactly what to expect and what's expected of them and what's expected of students. Like I said, I will be at every game. I'll be at most practices. I can't be at Sweeney Park, Brook Street, and Highland at the same time. The message has already been sent out. We have a clear one-strike penalty, one, one-strike policy. If they're not adhering to the guidelines, they're done. I guess, I, we spoke with the students already. They lost their spring sports, so they know exactly what's at stake. These seniors, great leaders, they don't want to lose their, their fall season here. So I can see that if freshmen aren't adhering to the guidelines, they would speak up and do something.
Can I ask Teresa's question in a different way? So if I'm the returning softball scene, I was captain, I'm going to be a senior next year, it's the summer. If I call up the kids on the team and say, hey, let's get together and play rockport. I do it completely independently, but I call it a captain's practice. That has nothing to do with the school. The school's not organizing it. It's not sanctioning it. The coach isn't participating in it. But there's nothing that stops Pam from doing it. I think Teresa's asking, are we going to be notifying students that they are not to be doing this during our sanctioned season? And if they do, does that count in the one-strike?
Pam, appreciate it. Yes, yes, they can, they, they should not be playing outside of their team while they're in season. They should be playing for the high school team.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Shannon. I'm sorry.
I was just kind of explaining kind of the same thing. I think that, since that Teresa read, I think it, it, I think the student might have misspoken in saying maybe their sentence wasn't clear. The scrimmages were probably happening on a club team. So it was kind of like, maybe the sentence was encapsulating both the captain's practice and their experience on a club team, you know, saying, I've been with my Manchester and Essex team, but I've also been in scrimmages with, in parentheses, another team. I think that's where, I didn't write the letter, so I think that's where it's going. And having a high school, a couple of high school athletes myself, I think that's kind of where that's coming from. The scrimmage piece of it, it's probably a club team. But nevertheless, Teresa, I take your point. I understand. And yes, we should make sure that there is no scheduling other types of competitions during our sanctioned season with that same team.
Okay, is there any, any more school committee questions for Jordan or Tricia?
I have one. Sir, and this is something I should have asked earlier. Just, I get how you're structuring the, the trainer. Is the trainer going to be guiding kids on how to wrap an ankle? Or is he actually going to be doing it? And then we just need to make sure he has everything he needs.
Students, yes.
Okay.
The idea would be to, we are putting a tent outside that, that door of the cardio room. And to have everything that they need right outside that tent.
And then the MIAA regs expressly say what level of PPE he needed?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Any more questions for Jordan and Tricia? I believe that we need a motion to approve fall sports. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Move that we approve fall sports.
Sorry, can I just jump in for one second?
Yes.
I guess I'm just struggling with the vote because I'm just concerned with, like, if we were all remote through June, that's one situation. But with the hybrid kind of lingering, I'm concerned about the overlap. So I'm having a hard time figuring out, like, I guess, voting on this because I'm just concerned with, yeah, playing in another town and then kids going back into a building.
It's because we're only voting for fall sports right now. And I think we're trying really hard to get the younger kids back in a hybrid. I don't, we wouldn't be able to move the high school program until the semester change anyway.
Okay, yeah. And I'm just thinking like long-term, because I'm thinking, obviously, we're going to talk probably winter sports. You know, I'm just, I'm just thinking the whole, the whole sports program in general.
Yeah, I know. I really appreciate that. But I think right now, because we're only talking about fall sports and that we wouldn't be moving the high school kids until there was a semester break anyway into the hybrid or any other model, we can probably feel pretty comfortable that there's not going to be overlap between the sports and a hybrid situation in the high school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Or suggestion would be to clarify, qualify the motion as a non-precedent setting motion or non-precedent setting for future seasons. That way, just because you approve fall sports doesn't mean you'll automatically approve, or that your approval of fall sports then leads credence to the necessity to approve winter sports.
Oh, that's very fancy. Would somebody like to do what Pam just said?
Yeah, I'll, I'll switch it to move to approve the fall sports program as presented by, in the, as presented by Jordan and Trish, for just the fall season only. For high school only.
Okay. Okay, so that was Ken made the motion, and I believe Shannon was the second. So, Era?
Yes, and thank you to Jordan and Trish for all of their work on this.
Yeah. Annie? Matt?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Ken made the motion. Teresa? Okay. And yes, I, I am also a yes. And I think it's really, you guys have done a great job getting this all together. And I think the school committee's done a really great job stating our position on how strongly we feel about how important it is that everybody stay safe and follow all these rules. So yes, definitely fall sports. I believe that's a unanimous vote in favor of fall sports.
Yeah, and, and one thing I also, as I'm, as I'm having not second thoughts, but one of the things, and I assume, Trish, that there isn't similar approval needed for the extracurriculars and arts, which are phenomenal, which I, I know this has been a pile of work. And again, yeah, Cape Ann League and MIA has done a great job getting this going. Hopefully, we can roll into the extracurriculars as well, when this is a good example to follow, at least in terms of structure.
Definitely, Ken. And I appreciate the school committee's support for our student athletes and all of our students that are interested in the variety of their passions, be it visual arts, performing arts, robotics, DECA debate, or the multitude of other offerings we have.
Yeah, I know that my, my own kids really enjoy participating in some of those other activities. So I'm really looking forward to getting those up and going this year.
Yes, 100%. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Jordan and Tricia. All right. Moving on, hybrid transition indicators.
This? I'm just speaking to myself here on mute. Sorry about that. Okay, so we've got several buckets to unpack here tonight. So we had a preliminary discussion last meeting about how we might want to frame our thinking around when it is the appropriate time to begin transitioning to hybrid. And I think our discussions to this point have been, as we've stated a couple of times already tonight, focused primarily on the elementary, starting with the youngest first. So probably some combination of K, K1, or K2 as the first group to go hybrid, and then looking at 3-5. And then I do think realistically, not to deflate anyone's hopes, but to provide some sense of consistency. I, I can't see a situation where things change so drastically that we're able to flip the switch on hybrid for the secondary before a semester break. I think it would take us some time to reorganize some things and prepare the building. So I think we would need some significant lead time. And I think we know that even the way we discussed our decision-making this summer, that the, the conditions at the secondary and the rationales there are somewhat different than that at the elementary. So they're kind of two different buckets. That's just my perspective, and obviously, everything is open for debate. So on October 5th, we're going to talk about kind of where we stand against these indicators. But our job tonight is just to agree that these are some of the, the measures that we would use to determine our readiness for moving forward. So I think we talked last time that, you know, number one is the state of COVID, the virus and, and what it's doing in our, in our region and in our two towns. And I think, you know, after lots of conversations with people, without a doubt, the numbers right now, that's a green check. It's, it's a good to go. If that were the only variable we had to worry about, we'd probably be back like, you know, nothing had changed. So this one, for the time being, is in a ready-to-go state. Implementation of the safety guidelines, we're holding it at yellow mostly because we anticipate what we need to do now for the summer, fall season, maybe, may change for the winter season. But I don't think, if we could do like a yellow slash green, I think we are in a very strong position with our HVAC and mechanical systems because of the age of our buildings and the fact that even our, our older building at this point has had high, high degree of maintenance and improvements over the past few years. So the two that I think are for the committee to talk about tonight, and there's been some conversation with the Board of Health, is capacity for supporting contact tracing. Should the school reopen, there's a lot going to be, there's a potential for more work to be done there than, than has been needed in the past. And then the conversation around what we see happening in some other communities around, I don't know if I cut it off. There it is, surveillance testing, either rapid testing or batch testing. Of course, we would get advice. And I think this is on my to-do list for next meeting in terms of reaching out to, I think, Wellesley and Natick. Wellesley, I think, is doing the, the rapid testing, the individualized package. And I think Natick is doing that, the batch testing or the pool testing. So it's on my list to see what they've put together and, and report back to you with a little information on that. But we've talked about those two as kind of having a foot in, in, in a couple, it's in the health and safety bucket, but it's also in the confidence building bucket in that we may want to pursue some of these things, not just for a purely scientific reason, but to show our level of proactiveness and our desire to be a step ahead of an outbreak. I know we've talked about this last meeting, that the state's providing us a resource. If we were to go back to school and we were to have a small outbreak, we could call for the outbreak team to come out and help us manage it. I'm not sure from, you know, an employee perspective, that waiting until there's a problem is, is a comforting notion. This may go away to building confidence in parents who maybe have some level of discomfort in returning to school and some staff as well. So this is up for debate as to whether we keep it on here and whether we outlay the funds to provide the service. So then I think we said we're pretty much for the next couple of months, looking at the elementary because we need some significant changes in the regs for the high school. I think what we will do is study how other schools are managing it, how their, how their cohorting is working, how their advisory is working against offering the full program. So our students at the secondary going into this year will be receiving over 200, what would it be, 240 minutes plus per week of instruction, where we do know that some schools that are implementing the hybrid at the upper levels are looking at about 90 minutes of instruction per subject area per week. So there's, everyone's getting there a different way. It's not to say one is right or one is wrong. But if delivery of the full program still remains the ultimate goal for the secondary, we're going to need to see some big changes in how many kids we can put together on a daily basis. At the elementary, I think it's more of a conversation about what we want to set as our priority goal and what's a minimum amount of instructional time that would be, we would be satisfied with in the transition to hybrid. Right now, again, we're giving the full program, so they will have a typical, typical subject load per week of time on learning. It might look a little differently if we have to cut into the day a little bit for some of the protocols to support the guidelines once we go in. But I think we would just, as this group, want to settle on a number that we should be targeting in that case. Is it 90 minutes per subject per week? Is it 120 minutes? How do, how do we want to set a benchmark there and then build to it? And then staffing, I think, you know, I guess I would almost put this on top. Staffing is the linchpin. We can have all of the other indicators ready to go. But we do need, you know, we, school is a simple formula. It's an adult and students in some type of ratio. So we're going to need an adult in the classroom with the students when we're ready to come back in. And I think we can look at it, we, we talked about this last time, we can look at it in a couple of ways. We can either say, unless there's a certified teacher in the room, we're not ready to go. Or we could say, we can look to facilitate some of the leave requirements, leave requests that we have and leave qualified leaves that we have. Or we could say we can look to facilitate some of the leave requirements, leave requests that we have and leave qualified leaves that we have by saying, okay, we can offer an accommodation, you could teach remotely, but we'll staff the classroom with the TA. So the student can have the in-school experience, but we can still provide certified instruction via a teacher while accommodating a leave. So I would look for some combination of actual teacher or TA coverage per classroom. And again, as the kids get, depending on how many grade levels you want to do, there's a kind of a sliding scale of cost there. But on average, that if we went with the TA model to cover a teacher who needs an accommodation, you would probably be looking at 25,000 to 30,000 per classroom for salary and benefits. And then we just need to assure, and I think the next bullet, it, it can be done, we will be able to find a nurse. It's just going to be whether or not we're able to find an available school nurse who can come in as a permanent sub or whether we'll have to take a more expensive route and go for a contract service. Because nurses, school nurses are in high demand right now. If you're looking at some of the want ads, it's school nurses and either certified nurse assistants or LPNs to come in and assist them in managing, just kind of managing the day-to-day. Because you, when you think about it, we may be having 50% capacity each day, but they'll have all of their typical medical supports, plus all of the, all of the anticipated COVID calls, you know, the runny nose, the soiled mask, the assist for a child who seems feverish. So I think what they're trying to do is, is just have a, a sense of having enough hands on deck if someone needs to be manning or womaning the isolation room, but yet still, you know, doing their daily meds distribution. You wouldn't want to cross-contaminate in that way. And then bus monitors, that's been on our list since from the beginning. And that's just making sure we have some folks on the bus to manage the process there. Again, my guess is that's, we're projecting five based on the number of buses we have. With the younger kids, my guess is we would have, we have to offer the busing. We're a regional school district, it's not an option. Anyone who, who has to travel, who lives over a mile and a half from school is eligible for the bus. But I think what we know from daily practices, the younger kids tend to get rides in this environment. We may not have the bus, the bus population that we have typically. So we may get away with two or three monitors. But typically, we budget to what we think will be the worst-case scenario, so that we have set aside enough money to cover all of our expenses. Which brings me to the final bucket that we're going to look at, which is the financial. I think I would recommend that we have a discussion. I would like to design to a budget because I think we could achieve a lot of things if the sky is the limit on our finances. But we do know we have a limited number of reserves, and we will need to commit some to making the hybrid work. We've already committed money to making sure our tech footprint for this year is secure. We do have about 650,000 coming in, in grants and FEMA reimbursements. I'm hopeful we get more federal dollars going forward, but we haven't seen it yet. So, you, you know, we could be just borrowing from our reserve account to be paid back later. I know. I don't know what everyone's confidence level is on that, so I think we want to pick a reasonable percentage to dedicate. But if we know what the ceiling is, then we can, then I can give you a sense of what the options are with that budget as opposed to coming in pie in the sky and then having to roll it back. So that's an overview of the indicators that I, I think we would propose using to monitor our readiness to go forward.
Thanks, Pam. Comments?
You're welcome.
Talk a little bit about this, the, the program at the elementary level indicator here, or indicators here. Because my, I'm looking at the wrong one here. There we go. So when we did this initially and made the vote and had the presentations, my understanding was that the elementary, the full complement of the elementary program, particularly individual assessment and the RTI or WIN programs would not be able to be accomplished. But this is saying that the instructional supports are flexible and they can be. And so is something different, or are we looking at it differently, or is it, am I missing something?
I think it's trying to say that if we move from remote to hybrid, we won't lose services. Like, we shouldn't go, the indicator would say that the move to hybrid would allow us to, allow us to keep the same level of supports that we could offer in a remote program. So we shouldn't lose programming by going to hybrid.
Okay. That, okay, that's, that's what I'm hoping to hear. Thank you.
Yep.
Folks, you know, Pam and Shannon, and I have looked at this for a week and a half now. So I'm interested in hearing questions about this or, you know, things you need to be, that should be clarified, that sort of stuff.
Well, I've got a thought.
Okay.
Yes, you want to call on people?
Well, maybe we just go through in order. Or is there any concern with relying on the state documents for the COVID assessments?
The, the one concern I had, I guess, Pam, is, is, this is Ken speaking, is around the state documents. I don't know how quickly or what the frequency of updates are from the state documents. But again, there was recent guidance out, I think you've heard it from the Commissioner of Education, that you should average that map or average the results over three weeks before arriving at it. So it was really the update frequency and that averaging should cover. And I think all you have is a Board of Health response as well. If anything, I respect short-term.
Not an expert at all, but the method we have here wouldn't, doesn't really create a structure that Hamilton has in place, but does allow for the Board of Health to raise an alarm. So this would say, the way we have it structured here is the, the COVID map comes out every Wednesday. So every Wednesday, we have a sense of what happened 14, 10 to 14 days ago. So you're right, I think guidance is that we would look at a three-week trend. So when we go to our October 5th meeting and we decide we're going to look at the COVID map, we'd look three weeks back. We've been very, very stable, so it's probably not going to change at all. What they do, what they did in Hamilton is their Joint Board of Health, Hamilton and Wenham, have a higher, a higher degree of caution system that's in place. So when there was an outbreak at Gordon, they flipped their communities into a local red, which then flipped Hamilton-Wenham from hybrid to remote. So we, I don't think our Board of Health meets in a formal way to do that on a regular basis. We could ask them to. I don't know if it's necessary. I'm sure they would make us aware if we had some type of outbreak in town. Shannon and Annie, are you drawing more from the conversation that we had than I'm recalling?
Um, no.
Can you draw on that?
Well, we didn't, we didn't formalize anything. We didn't ask to formalize anything other than have the, have representatives of the Boards of Health sit in on our collaboration meetings for the duration of the pandemic. It's like, or with what you're talking about specifically, it seems like more informal on a check-in.
Yeah.
Which I think is, is totally doable in a, in two small communities. I mean, it's just picking up the phone. You don't need a whole lot, I think, red tape, any kind of processes. It's simply, hey, you know, we've got something going on, and I think that would suffice. Annie, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I, I felt like the two, we were speaking with the two health agents in Manchester and Essex today, and was it today? I don't know when it was.
I don't remember.
Anyway, they were, they already have been very proactive. And so I, I think that, you know, they know that, that we are looking to them for any changes in information. And I think go, in the past, we've had that same sort of interaction, so that's good. I think the only thing that we had wanted to have more clarity on and perhaps more of a system mapped out would be on the tracing issues. And I, I know that there was kind of a, yeah, we have people, but I, I think I would feel more comfortable if we had that process mapped out for us of, you know, we have this number of cases, this is, we would go to this next connection, you know, so that we know what the system is and when we would have to trigger reaching out to the CTC. And as you can see in the notes on the CTC, we've had poor response rates from the CTC. And so instead of saying, ah, you know, we can't use the CTC, what we want to do is communicate with our Boards of Health and ask them to communicate with the CTC expressing, you know, the past interactions and asking them to bump it up a notch because a lot of people are going back to school and we need to be able to go to them if, if we need to. So I think, we think we can handle this, the content tracing locally. But if, you know, something happens and we need to, to go to the CTC, we want to make sure that they take our call and act quickly. So I think that that was kind of where we were going with that. So that was the, kind of the conversations we have with the two Boards of Health. Is that accurate, Pam and Avi, or Pam and Shannon? Okay.
Offer, to me, the question becomes, so, and I do think what I learned of the Hamilton-Wenham structure is that it's a more formalized structure. So what do, where, and this is, we can't do what-ifs all the time, but I want to be prepared to respond if we have the 60-student party that gets reported with no masks. So that's what the school needs to be prepared to manage. And if, if the answer is simply, it's the school's call, then that's fine. If we want to come up with a mechanism where the Board of Health would be directing us on what to do, that's another option as well.
I think we just.
We're neither here nor there, and I think that's where, that's a little bit of the, the gray area that we have that I'm not seeing existing in some other areas, in other communities.
So we just had a conversation about athletics and how the committee felt about any violations of that, of the, the regulations that were given by MIAA. So it seems to me that we're asking for local control there to shut something down, and I think the same, I would say that we have the power to do the same here. If we feel that there's a concern and we want to revert back to remote, we should. And I think the other thing that we talked about whenever the, how we talked was, any parent that feels uncomfortable sending their kid to school at any time can always choose to bring, keep their kids home. And that's, that's also an option. So, you know, I know that, that we're concerned about kind of bogus reports of, you know, so-and-so had a party and I saw their, I was looking in their backyard. I, I want to be careful about that sort of thing, that that doesn't drive our decisions either.
No, let's say, and Annie, I guess around the, there's, there's this thing about the switch from elementary to, from hybrid to remote, or if we go from remote to hybrid, but then back again, that there needs to be some sort of control of the switch. And forgive me, Pam, as the, for thinking of you as the snow, as the snow day caller, but it kind of almost falls in that same realm. Because we may have that, we may be in hybrid in elementary and have the 60-student party at the high school, and that's not necessarily a clear connection there.
Right.
So, so it's, it's not only a school committee, I think also somewhere, Pam, yourself within the district has, is going to end up having that, you know, which way do we, at lea, at the very least, to err on the side of caution and call it snow day or call it back to hybrid for, or back to remote for a specific portion.
And I appreciate that, Kate, and, and I am more than comfortable doing that. I just don't want to get in a position where it, which is kind of emerging now, which is we, we are making a broader case than just the COVID numbers, but yet we're having, but the Board of Health keeps impressing upon us that the COVID numbers are good. So I just don't want the district to be put in a position where it's being second-guessed on a general health decision it's making for the kids, or it could be a staffing issue. You know, if we, we find ourselves in the Lincoln-Sudbury situation, we may have people not comfortable coming to work. I'm not saying it's, that would be the case, but there's a lot of different things that will play into it other than just the technical analysis of whether or not there's an actual COVID outbreak based on that. Do, do you know what I'm saying? We're managing a lot of fear and a lot of perception. And our ability to open is always going to be contingent on having enough people to, to run the school.
Yeah. And I guess, and I guess you, Annie, you were, you started by asking, you know, some feedback on this. I, I was going to say, I guess what I'm really counting on in these indicators is that this isn't necessarily, this doesn't become a, here's why we're not going back to hybrid, but I guess here's a list of, what are the metrics I see captures everything from finance to be able to make reasoned decisions on, yes, especially for the younger grades. We are at the point where we are comfortable, we have staff available to teach, the indicators are good. We know what the financial impact is. We're all, okay, we're clear on this is, these are situations to move forward to. And I, I think, I'm hoping this is more kind of as we think about what might be the next stage or full in-person for some portion or all of the elementary schools, you know, what are the things that, this is more a list of what guides that decision. Or is that, is that a fair characterization of what you tried to do here? Sorry, I was too worried there.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, it's, but it's everything, nothing is in isolation, right? You can't make any of these decisions in isolation. Every bucket has kind of, has an impact on another, right? The staffing is, is gonna, is always going to be kicked in on any of these, these things. So, yeah, it's as good as I think we can get it. But, so, so going back to the top, we're, we're good on the first. The second one is, is what it is. The third, tracing capacity. The act, the action items here are that we are going to reach out to the Boards of Health to talk about the conversation with the CTC and also to invite them to send a rep to the collaboration meeting. The next one is.
Sorry.
Surveillance testing, which we, I'm sorry, the, the commit to cohort integrity, which, sorry.
Yeah, so we should talk about this one, because I think we're not necessarily in agreement on this one. Shannon and I have been a little at odds on this one because, you know, this, and I think Matt actually brought up this issue earlier, committing to the cohort integrity. We can't make families commit to this, but we can ask for organizations like the Y or the after-school program to work with our cohorts. And so we don't think that you can necess, we don't know how, how, how we can actually hold anyone accountable for this. And what is the indicator, right? But it's still an issue that has to be addressed. So does that stay or go?
Well, maybe that's what, I mean, Lincoln-Sudbury and that other school district that had to shut down because of the parties, this is what shut them down, was the students' lack of willingness to commit to the cohort integrity by having a huge 150-person unmasked party, right? So I think that's one example of where it applied.
But it's a tough one to, to measure, to measure, because that cohort integrity not only applies to the students in the household, but also the adults in the household.
Yep.
Everybody who's part of the household, how they manage. And those may be people that are every single day going into red areas of the state, whether it's for work or for their personal business, or to visit other family that they're responsible for.
Clear for our community partners, because the Y program's already setting up their groups in, with our classroom cohorts. And if we end up having any other community partners or other groups we're working with, we want to make sure they're doing the same thing. So even though we can't manage families and individual choices, we can manage the groups that we're working with.
I think.
And I think that's fair.
The way I looked at it was, yeah, we can't manage the families, but maybe we can manage what happens inside of our buildings, and that's the community partners. But again, how do you measure it? That's, that's where I keep coming back to. How do you measure something like that?
I think that, I think it's not. I think, I think it's not so much a metric as, as part of a guideline, like you must have appropriate social distancing and mask wearing and other policies. You must also have a policy that attempts, that uses cohorts as best as possible to minimize the spread. So the chance of spreading. I don't see how we can measure it. I can see it as, hey, here's something that's a best practice.
So here's a proposal on this one. So it's either, the indicator would be either yes or no, so that community partners commit to cohort integrity.
Community partners, why would we be in an agreement with a community partner that didn't, didn't commit to that? Like if we have the YMCA program committed to working, that's part of the agreement. So I don't think, I just don't see it needing to be here as an indicator unless it's talking about something other than what we can already manage, like by that contract. And I, and I'm in a big way think that we, we really can't.
Yeah, I'm going to die for this one. Okay?
To do it to the extent that they can do it, but right now the kids are in cohort concepts, they're not really coming in and out of school. So you have kids who need five days a week in some instances of childcare. So it may not, it may not break out that A group and B group are completely separate when we come to rolling back into school.
Right.
I think they will have no problem, once we are doing that, making sure the kids are at least separated by the days of the week and to the extent the teacher that they have. But they may not have enough, you know, if you've got one student with Mrs. B, he's got to go with some other kids. He can't be all by himself today. So the numbers may not work out for a pure cohort replication.
So, I mean, do you think we should take this out?
I think that that falls in the category kind of, well, and I'm, I'm a little bit on board with the, the CTC information and stuff. Things that have to happen if we think they're a priority, but they don't necessarily need to be indicators that we're ready to take a cohort into a hybrid level. Do we really need, I mean, that's the question, like with the CTC stuff, does that have to be fully in place and operational before we do that? Because that's to me what it says as an indicator. Same thing with the cohort intent, like those are things that we want to incorporate as, as our practice and what we're about in doing this in a safe way. But in terms of a list of indicators, I don't know that, that those need to be there.
The contact tracing, I think absolutely has to be there. You have to have a structure of how that's going to happen if you need it. But this, this material here, the, the bullets are basically like explanations. They're not, they're not, they're more, they're materials you have context for. I mean, you, you can slim this whole damn thing down. It's just that those, that's why I included that. That was more for context.
Okay.
But CTC is there whether you want it or not. It's still there.
Yeah, I mean, what the board of health says is, I mean, we have to work with the boards of health on this. And so my, I don't know, my expect, I guess, maybe I'm thinking about what needs to be here differently. And so I can see where that, where that comes in. But, sorry, go ahead.
So we taking commitment to cohort integrity out?
But you already know how I feel on this one.
You will pay for this.
Sure, I will.
Anyone else going to fight to keep it in?
Well, I mean, no, not as an indicator, but yes, as a, we are committed to keeping cohort integrity.
Pam, I've got the working copy. I'm going to delete it, Kay.
Okay, good.
Kind of like a best practice.
And Teresa, that I will edit this, the CTC, the content tracing bullet, or the, the box and make that tighter. Okay?
I'm thinking of this, that we want it to be something that parents can look at, see, I know where they are too, even though the decision making happens here. So thank you.
Yeah. And we actually, I think in the next, next, before the October meetings start, need to go and take, look at each one of these indicators and put the measurement in so that it's ready for the October 6th meeting. So this will slim down a little bit. Okay?
When are we talking about posting this so that parents can see it and parents can see kind of like where we are in the whole process?
I mean, it's a public meeting, we can post this and just say it's a draft copy that's going to be, you know, it's a working document.
Our update page with our presentations and documents from this meeting. And it can go up as its own separate thing.
I'd like to-
I don't know if you guys ever look at that page.
Yeah, we do. I do.
All the time.
So it's there. All the links are there.
So can we actually post it as its own document? So people don't have to look through all the meetings and remember which meeting it was? Can we just have it as its own document?
Yeah, I think we had it as part of the FAQs too.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see it as its own, you know, its own link right up there.
If it's a working document, we should be careful not to have it in too many places because then you have to change all of them.
I, let me show you where it will go.
It just needs to be easily accessible. Well, as a document, I don't know that it's ever going to be final.
I'm going to need to make everybody more aware that this is here. But, let's see. Under the school committee header is your reports and presentations, and it's all by meeting with links to the key reports and or documents. So there will be a 9:15 entry and it will have draft indicators as discussed, or draft indicators 9:15. And someone can click on it and they'll get to see exactly what we presented tonight.
And then if we, we update it at the next meeting, then it'll be, the updated version will be in the most recent meeting. So they can just click on the more updated one.
Do we want to go to the next section, Pam?
Yep.
So this didn't really change much from what you presented. So you want to talk us through this maybe?
I think she did talk us through it.
Are we good?
I, I like this idea. I'm excited to hear more about it. I think it will really help with the negotiations.
Okay. Pam, do you expect us to decide on the time on learning or?
I guess I'm looking for more like, because program was kind of where we landed as our number one driver as to whether or not hybrid made sense for us. It was really, I guess I feel like it was very, very clear to me in the high school program, what, what we would get in hybrid versus what we would get in remote and why remote seemed to make more sense for the, now, I don't want to say the purity of the program, but for the broader access to the program, for the more time on learning that the remote program would offer, that it, it made the in-school experience seem like there wasn't as much value there. Like what we think we would get out of it, you would really just get presence in a building and still a lot of choppiness and, and difficulty. It wasn't really that clear to me at the elementary that we couldn't benefit from the high flex model of trying to do the, the classroom access from remote for three days with coming in for two. I, I think what we're always trying to say is that coming in for two days, I'm not really sure how it plays out in terms of the educational environment, at least in the beginning. I think it will be some getting up and running time and it's still only two days a week for people. So it's still a two, three split. So depending on some of the conversation around tweaking or what it may end up look like, looking like if you back off the high flex concept, that means three days of re, of asynchronous and two days in. And then we're right back to where we are this spring. So I guess what, what I would recommend the high flex model if we go in with hybrid, because then you still are trying to provide the entire program throughout the week, knowing that it may not be perfect. Once we start to back down from that, I think we lose time and learning. But if that is, I guess what I'm trying to say, if, if we want to just put time and learning and the program and all of that kind of in a second place position, because the, the getting kids into school and being with their peers and being with the teacher is of the utmost importance, then we might need to trade how we prioritize our variables. I think that's what I'm trying to say. And I can be open to either, but just want to be honest that if we start to back off the high flex model for hybrid, you're basically going to, I, I think you would start to look at a reduction in structured learning time over the course of the year.
I think we need to let our teachers try teaching in the remote model first, because those are all the same tools that they'll be needing to use in the high flex model. And I would really like to hear from the teachers and the principals over the next week or so, week or two, and for sure, like by our next meeting, to see how all that's going and how they're feeling about it. Because I think that's, like, we need the people boots on the ground to let us know if they can really do this and make it successful.
To share about that, that if, if we do go back and we start to reprioritize instructional time versus, versus getting kids in the building, there are still going to be a good number of kids who can't or won't return to in-person, return into the schools. And they are still our students. And so now we're reducing a program for kids that don't actually need it to be reduced in order to get people in the building. And so that to me is a trade-off that I don't think is reasonable. And so for that reason, I'm in support of using an indicator that says we are able to maintain the program. And if that means that, that we end up having TAs in classrooms and a teacher teaching remotely to accommodate kids in buildings, then that's one thing. That's, that's a trade-off I'd be more willing to consider. But I just don't see it being, cutting out the instruction because it's not every kid that's going to benefit from being in the school.
How we benefit, I don't know how we measure the in-person instruction and the benefit of it until we do it. So my thought is, you know, we talk about the high flex model and the remote piece of it. That's a, that's a given for the big kids. They get it, they can do it. You can deliver the whole program that way. They can access it, you know, I'm, I'm way overgeneralizing. But with the younger kids, I feel like if you don't have them in front of the teacher for at least some part, it doesn't really, the, the remote piece doesn't stick either. And I feel like it may not be pretty in the beginning, but I feel like people will, you know, they'll get into a groove, they'll get into a flow. And I feel like more of the educational piece will happen as we move forward. You know, I think the kids will start to get it. They'll get a comfort level, the teachers will get a comfort level. And then I think they can move forward with, you know, delivering more of the program than we think can happen right now.
Because it, it seems like we're kind of going back and forth in the discussion with over, over the weeks. So when we're talking about this, are kids going to be in front of their teacher? If they're actually in the building, are they definitely going to be getting direct instruction from their classroom teacher? Because I've, I've heard it being discussed kind of both ways, that maybe yes and maybe no. So I think that's important to know before we can make a decision on, on saying it's worth it to be in person, you know, to see the benefit of being with their teacher. If they're not even going to be with their teacher, it's not, it's a no-go. It's not a no-go. I should say it's a different priority.
And it's not, it's a truly unknown, my response is, I'm not certain what the makeup of the staff will be when we move to the next phase and whether, if I started with, with Ms. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mostly because we don't know what the leaves might present themselves once we make the flip to hybrid. So we could have to have a long-term sub, we could have to have a TA with the person working remotely. We just don't know. If we use the, use operationalizing the in-person special education programs that we're currently running, what we know is 11 staff members were needed to run that program. Of the 11 staff members, we had four to five that needed alternate assignments or needed to be replaced with an, with an LTS. So that's about 26%, which is where we're running at full staff, you know, currently we're between 25 and 30% of staff members who have, in our current configuration, put in for some type of leave or an accommodation.
Well, I think we need to-
So I think it's a legitimate question about what, what the makeup of the staff is like and what the class that I start with, what will it look like when we go to hybrid? It's not a reason not to, but it's a, it's a consideration about, I think you've said all along, Teresa, painting the picture of what it's actually going to be versus what we're hoping it will be.
Yeah. I think the indicator as it is makes sense. That, for, to me, the indicator, which is what we're trying to get at right now, is that yes, that as long as instructional supports are flexible and functional and can be enabled in hybrid and remote models during transitions, then we're ready to look at the next cohort. Functional and can be enabled in hy- Sorry, that came out all really fast at once.
So we-
Maybe it doesn't have to be minute for minute exchange or a perfect replication, but we have to be able to maintain program integrity in order to say that what the kids are getting for, I mean, because while there is a childcare component, I think that a, a teacher would argue their primary responsibility is to deliver instruction and to provide educational growth for a student along with the social emotional needs that you need to provide to get them to be able to access the curriculum. So if, if folks aren't working toward their purpose, we're not going to be able to maintain program integrity. So I think that's where you get the concept of in for the sake of being in versus in and being productive and being able to deliver our program with some level of integrity so that we're making forward progress.
I think we can be in and, and get to level of integrity with the program. It's not going to happen right away because everyone's going to have to get used to the processes and the protocols and all that other nonsense. Not nonsense, but you know what I mean? And I think as I said, everyone is going to get into more of a group. And I think the integrity then will start to become more apparent.
Okay.
Are we discussing where we are right now with it or what the indicator will be? Because that seems, that seems to, do you see what I'm saying? Like that's, I mean, maybe we could, but maybe we also have to let this happen because the remote part is part of it. My personal opinion is that this indicator, as Pam just stated about the integrity of the program makes sense. I don't think we need to get into specific hours of time on learning to make our indicator work for this. I think that integrity of the program is, is reasonable to move forward with.
So under elementary, changed the bullet to maintain program integrity, kept the instructional supports are flexible and functional. And then you're saying delete the established time on learning goal?
Just add to maintain program integrity to the end of the sentence on the bullet. Leave everything there and just add, in an effort to maintain, or to maintain program integrity.
And that's after transitions?
Yep.
I have a question for Pam. Isn't, is the state not requiring a time on learning goal that we have to be aiming to hit?
It is 900 hours at the elementary level. Prorate that for the 170 day versus 180 day school year. We could apply for a waiver as well. Kindergarten doesn't have technical hours.
So I'm just going to write meet as time on learning goal or I think that, and Shannon said, you're going to have a rough start as you get, as you get better, your time on learning will improve. So can we just keep meet time on learning goal for hybrid schools in there and then tweak it if we need to in terms of work towards time on learning goal or something like that?
Sure, sure. The, the hybrid model we built will meet time and learning. It's if we start to back away from that and just say you're coming in two days a week and then it's asynchronous after that.
Don't, don't start saying that.
Okay. Okay, good. So I changed that to meet time on learning goal. Okay? All right. Okay. Okay, good. So I changed that to meet time on learning goal. Okay? All right. Staffing.
Need a budget to work toward.
Okay. And everyone, just so you know, the green is stuff that may fluctuate. And blue, no, wait, blue is stuff that may fluctuate and green is, once you've done it, it's, it's, no, it's like a binary thing, yes or no. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone have issues with this?
The simple one that Pam had last time, everything was one color. It was just yes and no. Green checks, yellow stripes or red X.
That's not the way life is, Teresa.
I know, I know, but it just is, I know.
That was actually a recommendation from the parent advisory group that we do a cover sheet that rolls it all up into a quicker look.
That would be great. Some of us have a simple mind.
Yeah, not, I don't believe that for a second. Um, okay, the financial is a mess, Pam. You, that's yours.
Okay. I think at the committee level, we need to just come to some understanding about what we're willing to invest.
So can I speak to this a little bit? Because, you know, in, when we were looking at, in the spring, when we were looking at our budgets and we were, this was pre-COVID. Avi gave us the lowdown on how much, you know, what happens to our reserves when we spend X. You know, it was like that sliding scale of if you spend this much, next year you're going to have to use this much and the next year, and then we're all freaked out. Do we, I think that that is a good tool for us to look at because you'll be using, you know, X plus COVID this year, right? But, but maybe next year, you're just going to be using X. So it's not a fair thing to visit the COVID expenses on next year's budget ask, correct?
Depends on how long COVID lasts.
Okay.
It does, but I think, I think the magic, magic number, the, what we need to determine is once you spend reserves, they're never coming back. So even if it's not a reoccurring cost, it doesn't matter.
Right.
The money's gone. But if we have to spend an initial $700,000 on staffing this year and we don't get federal aid to replenish our reserves, is that number sustainable? Will we have, I think I know where you're going, will we have enough reserves after that to keep us going for X amount of time?
Right. And I think if we could look at that as the 650, when will we, when will we get more certainty on that?
After the election.
Everybody should be registered to vote.
I, I don't know. I think I just read today that the, the recommendation is the House stay put until there's some type of COVID relief bill, but I don't even know what's in it at this point. We've been so hyper-focused on local.
Yeah.
There has been no broad discussion, like this spring, it was a constant barrage of projections and potential scenarios and, you know, examples of how bad it was back in the day type of thing to try to figure out where this was going. Then everything kind of went crickets, but there still is no formal state budget.
Right.
And I don't know, the, not to be, this isn't a political statement, but the federal government right now is not producing anything that's going to help us understand the process.
Yeah, and I don't count on them doing anything either. So, so we know we have 375 that we've already allocated, correct? Avi, it was 375 we took from, from reserves. So we know we've got that starting out next year.
335 for this year.
335, sorry. So 335. So can we do something like that for the next meeting? 335 plus COVID, less the 650. And then what is 375 plus the, you know, what is our normal level services increase? I don't imagine the towns are going to want to do anything major.
What was our regular, what was our increase this year? I don't remember. 3.7, 3.8?
Yeah, we used 385,000 to balance the budget. So if I'm looking at, and I can try to pull this up. So I think I've split out in a budget document that I had sent to you, the K2 only costs look like it would run us annually about 680 or $68,000 a month for hybrid at the K2. So 680 would be just under two years' supply of reserves for balancing the budget.
Um, I thought we were 321 reserves. That's including stabilization plus.
Yeah, but some of that's capital, yeah, it's capitalization we can't use for operation.
Yeah, we need to, could we look at that too? Because we need to make a decision about Essex Elementary Playground. Um, I think we should make that decision before we commit to other funds too.
All right. So I'm hearing that we're not really there yet on establishing a percentage or a budget tonight.
No.
I think what I need to hear from Avi, like I don't think we can realistically go for some kind of override vote until the 2020, 22, 23 school year. That's three years out.
No, that's, it's even further out than that. We do 2022 next year. I'd say three years away, three years from May.
So we need, so we need four years' worth of reserves to carry us through the next four years. So we need to work backwards from that and make sure that we have enough to maintain a level services program for the next four years.
But we also want to make sure we're not breaking reserves because we still have bonds out.
And this is just professional opinion. I, I would want to do some more fact gathering for you, but professional opinion tells me you're going to need to spend money beyond level services once we get back to some normal state of affairs because we're going to need to re-engage, remediate and rebuild. And we were already cutting it in the hole to start with. So level services isn't, we'll make it work if that's what we have to do, but it's not going to put us in a position to, to climb back quickly. So I think you do have to look at your cost benefit of the short-term gain, long-term loss versus short-term loss, long-term gain. So I, I think it's an important conversation to have.
Yeah.
Because I'll, I'll admit, there's a level of frustration that we're so hyper-focused on these two and four-week increments because I'm almost ready, in, in, you know, this may not be a popular statement, to look past this and start building and planning for what is to come. Because I think this is going to go back and forth every week for the next six-plus months. It's going to look like we're cleared for hybrid. We're going to get ready to do it. Something will change and we can't do it. Or we'll get in and we might have to come out. So I'm, I'm looking for a pathway to stability. To the extent we can provide it and for getting ready for what comes next. Because I think hyper focusing on the short term isn't necessarily going to pay a lot of benefits.
A path for stability and I'd also like to get our youngest kids in front of their teachers. So if we could make all of that happen, that would be awesome.
I am the long game.
And- Little kids in front of their teachers. And Teresa's trying to talk, I think.
Okay.
I, I, I guess part of my, my thought on this is, and I've said this before, is that I, I wanted, when we're talking about picking a budget number, for me, the, the money, and I'm so new to this admittedly, that some of the things I'm still trying to learn and wrap my head around. But for me, the issue is not so much the, it's that this is a gamble, you know, like Pam was just saying, this is a gamble. That, that at any time, we could be moving toward this and spending the money toward getting back into a hybrid situation with any cohort and we could be shut down. And so there is an absolute gamble with this money. So looking in the long-term effects, that concerns me. That, that it's not even a definite thing that we can 100% go forward to. But one thing that might help me with the path forward is if we're talking about agreeing on a budget total and, and the source of funding would be to, like we just said, prioritize who we're really talking about. And I think it's a bigger conversation than just saying our youngest learners. Because while the youngest learners are a top priority, I don't think they're the only priority. And I think there's discussion to be had for the different age levels about who's going back to school and what those age levels are going to cost. That to me is a clear path forward that I can wrap my head around if it can work within the rest of this.
I also just have to weigh in with Sarah on, on this one. In terms of there's many other districts that are going back hybrid. I, I, Teresa, I need to hear more kind of what you say, not prioritize the youngest. But I do think the youngest students that we have, they need to be learning how to learn. They need to be moving ahead there. Beyond the highest need students, we've already identified their priority. And I can't see there being a wave of elementary school closures or I don't know what the equivalent bankruptcies would be from other districts that have gone back to hybrid. And I, I feel we do need to be planning and figuring out how do we pick a section, K through two, K through three, K through five, and honestly look at how do we get there without putting timelines that are three or four years out for overrides? I think the public support is there for, okay, let's get the kids, get at least those students as the next wave. And there's the desire and we got to be moving, we have to be doing something to be preparing and moving in that direction.
And I just want to be clear, Ken, I'm not sure if you were saying that. I, I just want to be clear, my position is not that the youngest students aren't the next group. I'm just saying that there should be discussion to be had about what those delineations are.
Correct. And we, yeah, and that's fine. And that's where we need to get it, but it's an elephant that we have to eat and we need to start eating it, figure out what, where the first bite is, that analogy, but, you know, of how we get to begin moving back. And, and the finances can't be, we're going to do a million-dollar gamble and hope that everything's great. But it's got to be, I'm sure we can come up, I was going to say, there's going to be a practical path forward. Assuming numbers remain low, we get started and we, this is kind of the responsibility and we can, and people demonstrate that yes, students can move forward safely. So I'm, I'm taking the silence and I guess I'm just-
No, it seems like we're stuck on how, how, how much to invest.
And I think it's, where I'm at, Pam, it's a little bit less on how much to invest and more on what's the scope of what we're trying to accomplish as a next step? And what's a pragmatic way to get there that isn't a, you know, here's an incredibly high number. And I don't think any of us on the school committee are as, are, as equipped, you know, are well-equipped to be able to say what's, what's the next achievable scope in terms of a back-to-school.
So can Avi pull together those, a presentation for us next time?
What are we asking?
But what's he presenting?
Yeah. Are we presenting what each phase will cost?
No, I want to see what the numbers are today. We, and I've been asking for this for almost a month and a half about budget and where we are and what it's going to look like if we use, you know, any portion of something going forward. So, you know, I don't know why this is, oh, it's working for me. Um, I, Avi, are you talking?
Yeah, there are a couple of pieces here that are overlapping. And so one of them is the traditional multi-year budget process that we talk about, which we presented on, we can bring it up again, which kind of shows based off our run rate and a level services budget, what you could expect to happen to, you know, reserves, which are one-time money. Have them in the budget. And then on top of that, I think you need to layer in a current estimate of one-time costs for, you know, what's happening with COVID over and above the grants coming from the federal government. You know, I think I presented on this before and I was pretty clear that I do expect our spending on COVID to exceed the federal grants for, almost for certain. But, you know, there may be some things we can do in terms of spreading out some of the technology costs over multiple years, for example, that might help us a little bit. But, but then you still have the major unknown of kind of what this item on the checklist is really talking about, which is additional investments around bringing people back into the building, you know, students back into the building and what, what you might need to do that. And I think we have these estimates that are current. But I think as Pam's saying, and I agree, a lot of this is changing. And I think the bottom line is this, these numbers here are money that you might invest only to find out that you lose a portion of it if you come back and something doesn't work out. And so then you're kind of in that uncertain way to evaluate the risk of spending the money for a really important benefit that may not come to fruition and then, and then you've spent that one-time money. And so those are kind of the three buckets. They're all kind of different. I think we know already the answers. We can show them again around the multi-year operating budget. I think we can provide a similar update for where we are with COVID spending to date, which I think is starting to stabilize currently, but I think will change if we go back into an in-person model. So we've got two of the three pieces, I think fairly well-known. And then that third piece is kind of what we've been showing on this slide here that Pam has up. And so it's, you know, it's hard to evaluate that. So, so we could throw it together again and summarize it. But you're still going to always be brought back to this slide and, and this issue of, of the uncertainty and the high cost that may, that's just, you don't know if it's going to get you two weeks. You don't know if it's going to get you six months. You just don't know. But you do know that what you spend is gone.
My frustration as well, probably my impatience coming through. This, from a pragmatic point of view, is how we either make it work or make it, or can't make it work. And until I know, so it's going to be, we got to get postings up and we got to get hiring. And that's a two to four-week process in and of itself. So if we know we want to try for a mid-October transition, I need to get going now and get people working on the contract and then finding people in case we don't have people to come in. Otherwise, we can say we've met all of the indicators, but it, it hinges on actually physically having people in the building and able to go. So until I have some sense of how high to go with the costs, I can't come back and tell you, listen, I can only run 1K classroom. Or I can, you know, we can only staff, you know, two of the, you know, I've got one at Memorial and one at Essex for second grade, but then we don't have enough coverage for the other classes. It's like, we need to unearth where our problem areas are going to be. So from when we made the decision on August 11th, Allison has pretty much just closed the deal at the end of last week on getting all of the ducks in a row to get open for, for tomorrow. And that was with, you know, let's call it 50 students. And the other program we need to start tomorrow is still trying to hire. So I, I just, I need to, we need a ballpark. It doesn't have to be tonight, but know that there's going to be rollout time involved when we do land on a number. I mean, I could just go up with anticipated vacancies too and, and hope for the best.
So Pam, is your recommendation that we do K through five?
Well, I guess my recommendation is I don't want, I, I don't want to put, everybody's trying to launch clean for remote tomorrow. I don't want to set everybody down the path on hiring frenzy. And we're also going to have to do a, a negotiation frenzy to get ready. And we don't know what that's going to cost, right? There are a lot of unknowns in terms of, it could be simple. We could go in and we're like, yeah, everybody's known this is coming and we're good to go, you know, and we're done in a day. Or we could be spending three weeks at the table trying to hammer out what the issues are. Those issues could have some financial costs attached to them, or it could drive what we may need in addition to what's on this page for personnel.
But we're not, we're not there yet. We're, what I'm trying to ask is, I want to see the big, long game on finances because at a certain point, if we spend on our reserves, we kick in other problems with borrowing. And so we- And so we need to see kind of like what happens when we start spending to get the K to two going. And, you know, I'm not anywhere near being ready to make a decision to go hybrid because I don't know what the hell it's gonna cost. And I am not comfortable with making a decision when I don't see the big picture. And I, that's what I'm asking for, is the big picture. And I think we've got two new members, one who is not even here during budget season. I know that Teresa was watching the budget process. But we all need to have the same context for any financial decisions that we make. And what the risks are.
I hear that and I respect that. And I, and I get your, and I guess I'm, I'm still coming at this, and you are absolutely right. The finances are a portion of this. And Pam, you are correct, we do have to get going with where we're at. I guess I'm just still stuck in the, what's the visioning process for what even that first step looks like? So we have a shared, okay, what might this be? Finances are a part of it. We've talked about safety is a part of it. And you're absolutely right, Pam, the teachers and the staff and the professionals need to be able to say, hey, here's what our experience, so we, anything we decide or try to shoot for tonight is a bit cart before the horse. But I'm just really, and how do we, how do we go forward and create that vision? And is it, we really start in on that, you know, we touch base on it next time and kind of keep building on this? But it doesn't sound like we have a clear, agreed-upon model of, oh yeah, here's what the next step looks like. Forward cost or timeline to implement.
And I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure people are clear that I'm getting the sense that there's a sense of urgency. And I could be wrong, I can be misreading the signs, that there's a sense of urgency to start built, going down the track of preparing to implement the hybrid. And if we leave tonight without some kind of clear sense of what we're shooting for in those indicators and kind of what the ceiling is on spending, that's fine. And if we resolve it on the fifth, we're going to need four weeks out at a minimum to get it all going. So.
Thank you, no, thank you. And I just want to say one thing.
The conversation in the ether, right? So everybody keeps talking about the indicators as the step toward the hybrid. I just want us to be clear with everyone because I don't think it's healthy for us to. Yeah, we've got teachers who've been putting in a lot of time and effort to put forward the model that we decided on this summer. And we're having a heated conversation already about changing it. So there's a lot of questions from a lot of people. We've had parents who want to know when we're gonna make the move. And I'm sure we have teachers who want to know, how much time and effort do I put into establishing what I'm working on now? If you're gonna ask me to make a huge change in two weeks? That's all. I feel like we're having a lot of conversations that impact the way people are setting their own personal expectations and need to structure their work. And if everyone's fine in saying nothing is going to happen until November 1st, then at least that's an indicator that we're doing what we're doing for the foreseeable future.
I think that's fair.
And Pam, I just want to, can I just take, for a sec, I'm sorry, Teresa. I just want to say there's one thing I realized that I left out in my conversation tonight that I really need to emphasize, which is, we've kind of gotten into, as you say, heated conversation first and foremost. And it's not school committee comment time, but thanks to you and the staff and everybody at MURSC that has made today and tomorrow and the principles of death even possible and gotten us to where we are. And I apologize that the impatience has come out in some ways on, great job. How can you go a little bit further? Because the message really needs to be, it's been fantastic even that we're having this conversation. I have excited kids about going to school. So please, so you're absolutely right in saying that. And you're absolutely right in making sure that we need to be together on it. And some of it is, I guess I just am taking for granted, yeah, we're envisioning. And there is definitely conversation of what the next step is. And forgive me, this conversation was about the hybrid indicators. I really feel as a separate topic, when and if we get to it, we need to be talking about, hey, let's also be doing what we do on a regular basis of looking at how our remote model is going and how the education is going. Because you're right, that is the problem, that's not the problem. That's our most immediate concern with everybody backing going. And we can't pull the rug out from under that. And we don't, and I don't intend to. I apologize, I've kind of taken this theoretical and hypothetical about hybrid and this really isn't the first issue.
Please, no need to apologize. It's just, I want to be clear because I feel like our meetings are setting expectations in the parent community about when we may be poised to make a change. And I don't, we answer lots of questions about when we're going to go, when we're going to make the change. And I just don't want to set people up for believing one thing when we're not really going to be prepared to deliver it. And I just want to be clear on how long it may take us to do the things that are on this list and other things we're going to need to do to allow us to move forward with the hybrid. And I think if you look at what's happening in some other communities, you can still see, you can see where there are still unfinished contracts and standouts and movements. So we just, I just would like to be deliberate in our process and clear in where we're at. And I'd rather, if people are disappointed in the timeline, I'd rather manage that piece than, and set an expectation and not be able to meet it. So that's just my, my personal take on it.
Can I try to simplify? So, sorry. We're asking, we're hoping to be able to commit some sort of financial, make some sort of financial commitment. And that will guide you on what your decisions are. So based on this chart that you guys have put up, it's looking like in order to open K through five in a hybrid fashion, the commitment's gonna be almost $1.7 million, right?
For a year.
Yeah.
If we agree that every classroom needs a para, but I don't know that we're going to agree to that.
So if we look at one point, even if we don't agree to it, so if we look at that as the ceiling, look at 1.7. I think Annie's question is, what does spending $1.7 million now look like in the out-years? What is that, how does that look in future budgets? And when do we need to go back to the well? Is that kind of what you're asking, Annie? If we commit to this, what does that look like going forward?
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna happen because we can't afford it. We'd kill ourselves, we'd be toast next year.
I'm just trying to gauge it.
Yeah, sorry.
Avi, about 50% of the reserves on the line?
When you take out the allocations that we have for, you know, the capital funds for facilities as well as the commitment to 21 operating, you're starting 22, around 2.8 million. And so, you know, this, these numbers would just shoot that in half. And then, of course, you're gonna be spending money guaranteed right out of the gate for FY22 budget just to match what's in the budget right now. And I think there will be some, you know, level services is gonna have a new number associated with it in FY22 to be level with where we're at today. So, you know, exactly what, it's not like a typical level services year. So, so, yeah, this is gonna require a big commitment. And I wouldn't say it's, the money is there. The question is, what are we, you know, what does, how does that change our financial situation? And what does it, you know, what does it do to our capability to serve other aspects of our building? Sorry, not our building, of our program other than a single year of hybrid.
So can I just ask one more question on this 1.6? It's, maybe I'm not reading this right, but the 1.66, that does not include.
No.
The 1.66 does not include the fraction of 1 point, I'm sorry, $650,000 that we.
If you look at the top, if you look at PPE and technology, it seems like those, those funds have already been expended, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so those, those are, those are, that's your, that's your reimbursement right there. That's your federal money reimbursed. You've just, you've just, like, what is that called? You've just washed it out. So that's, that's done, that's already spent and it's paid for.
So then it's 1.165 out of reserves.
I think we, to, just to, PPE is only purchased at a quarter.
And if you're in school, you're gonna continue to need it.
Yeah, but we, but we made the initial purchase for the entire district. So if we're only running half a district, it should theoretically.
Right.
Last twice as long.
Yeah.
And these are estimates. I mean, I want to caution to that, these are, you know.
Right, but we have to build a budget and build a decision on the estimates.
Yeah, because I think the budget is also going to have an impact on negotiations and the strategy and what we can and can't offer in terms of incentivizing people to return to the classroom.
Yeah.
And you know, we could have a great day and everybody could do, I mean, we could just get the full complement of our K2 staff ready and willing to go and it could be a non-starter. I think we just need to kind of know what, what's the boxes that we're working in.
If you say 2.8 is what you've got to work with in reserves and you've got a, that, that's what I want to see. I want to see what that number looks like in the next three years.
1.165 on opening K through five, right?
I don't think we're gonna, no, I don't. I think what you do is you say, what have you already used for reserves? Visit that on every, you know, compound it on every year, you know, subsequently, and then add your COVID on top. And then it'll tell you what you can spend for COVID, right?
Okay, I see where you're going.
Does that make sense, Avi? I know you'll make it make sense.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to say before, which is that you take your operating run rate in a normal situation. Which right now is 335 in the current year. So if you just assume, let's just say rough numbers, 350 times, if it's a three-year target, you know, you're talking, you know, over a million bucks for that. And then you gotta add on top what the COVID loss is in our current model right now. And then what's left is, you know, whatever you have left of the reserve fund, let's just say, you know, you're looking at 1.3 to 1.5 million left, which is a big change to our, to our, you know, our, I say, our financial position, but affordable. And then the question is, how much of that do you want to allocate to a single year of hybrid instruction? That's just from an affordability. I'm not trying to put any value judgment on what this is. It's just the numbers, the math.
Right.
And then we can obviously put our bets where we want. You could say, for example, well, hybrid's more important and we're gonna cut three-year down to two-year, down to one-year. Or you could say, well, the communities might understand that delivering hybrid requires reinvestment in the school system. And so it's not a three-year look because people value getting the kids in the building. And so as a result, the prior notion that we would take maybe three more years before we ask for our kind of every 10-year type of correction might need to change because to put people, to put kids in the building requires investment in the COVID era. So far, we've not had an extra taxation for that. But, you know, at some point, are we gonna say that to do that requires more funds than we have available on a sustainable basis? Yeah, I'm not proposing that, but that's one of the, I think, things you'd want to look at. Is does that change the timeline of when we need to reset our multi-year budget strategy?
Yeah. Pam, can I ask one, make one request or two requests, actually?
Yep.
You asked about the para per classroom. Can we, can we revisit that to see what, what that might, what the actual would be against estimate? And then, second thing is.
Help me, actuals against estimate.
So right here, you're saying you're estimating it to 300K. But you said, I don't know if I necessarily need all that. So you.
Right, at the younger ages, likely you will, as they get older, you can probably trim back. Or you could say, we're not spending more than $300,000 in additional personnel costs. Put a package together and make it work. What that does is allows us to put a package together, but it's a package we also take to the bargaining table. So like, there has to, we have to like build into something at some point.
Right.
So maybe we just say, okay, there's one para and it's split between the two grade levels. Well, that's fine until, and hopefully both teachers at grade level will be able to return to the building.
Right.
If not, then one person may have to do, you know, classroom management, kind of do the high flex model as intended. The other person might have qualified accommodation and can teach remotely while the para maintains the class. But I think those are the things we're gonna need to scope out when we go back to the MOA discussion so we can help the faculty understand what it might look like for them coming back in the building.
Right, and then I just have one follow-up question, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute myself before you mute me. The one month versus the annual cost. So how much of a commitment in terms of dollars do you make if you, if you flip the switch? So if you flip the switch on hybrid, and we always know that something could happen and it throws us back in remote, do the, does the, you know, spigot turn off on the costs? Or are you committed through a contract to any of these costs? If you could just mark on the lines that are more than a month commitment in terms of dollars, that would be great.
Well, I think that's another strategy piece that the committee needs to be comfortable with, which is, if you want to look at the monthly cost, technically, anyone on this list would be an at-will employee. You could simply furlough them once we go on a hybrid. If you don't anticipate we're coming back into hybrid anytime soon. So, you know, if we're gonna go out for two weeks and then come back in, you probably don't furlough them because you want to make sure you have your workforce there. But if you're going out for six months, you know, for six months over the winter, you'd probably furlough them and hope you can get them back and have enough time to get staff lined up for the return.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm saying, like, just, even if, Annie, you just said, like, no way, I never proven 680, you gotta figure out how to do it at three. At least we kind of know what we're shooting for. And we can give you a flavor of what we could do versus, like, the ideas are driving the budget right now. And the idea of how to get coverage in the classrooms and how to have layers of coverage and making sure we've got all our bases covered is driving the cost estimates.
Yeah.
If we flip it and just say, 300,000 K2, and I'm picking that number randomly, it's a customer number. And another 300,000 for K5, that's, for 35, that's it. Show us what you can do. Then I can show you what I can do. And you can look at the numbers and Teresa, the program. And the two of you can kind of drill in on your variables based on what is feasible to do. And we can take those kind of packages to the association and say, based on the budget that we've set, here's how we think we can make it work. And they can bring their concerns to the table and we can work it through.
Yeah.
Because right now, I feel like we're, we're kind of stuck in the theoretical. And we're doing a great job, we're framing indicators, but everything's still kind of out there. It could be what could be territory and we're not really in an implementation stance.
I would prefer that we start with remote, see how it goes. I mean, everyone's starting their different models tomorrow. So I think in the beginning of October, we're gonna see how all this thing, how these work out. And, you know, the decision may be very clear to us. So I would like to see the finances because this, you know, this is a, this is a long game for many of us. And we need to be mindful of where we are with this.
And if anyone has any other recommendations about how to try to narrow down our path forward, I'm very open. I'm just trying to make sense of it so I can, I can train for people and a lot of different people.
But I found that then. And it's, it's not an idea to narrow the path forward, but it ties back to what you were saying earlier and it connects a little bit to what Annie was just saying, which is that when we started with this, we set out a timeframe for review. We set out a timeframe that we were going to establish the indicators and then review them at the start of, you know, the first meeting of each month, which means our first review of the indicators wouldn't be until October. So knowing that it's going to take time beyond that, that's okay. I feel like that's okay. I feel like we owned this, we made this decision, we knew it was gonna take time. And if it takes another four weeks after that, then that's something we just have to own as part of this process. But I would hate to see us rush through this process because, because people are eager. Yeah, we're all eager, but we chose to do this in a methodical and, you know, stepped-out way. And I think we can own that and accept that, yes, it takes time. And take a little bit of the pressure off in that way. And I think we can own that and accept that, yes, it takes time and take a little bit of the pressure off in that way. The top priority is going to be those youngest kids. We keep saying that. But it's going to take time. And I think that's something that we as parents, I have a young, a, a rising second grader. We have to just accept that this isn't a two-week process. We haven't even started school. So I think it's reasonable to accept a timeframe that it's going to take time and we, we established that already.
Okay.
But I think in order to move forward on any timeframe, we do have to start defining those costs. And I think that makes sense to do sooner rather than later. Just so we know what our path looks like, at least financially.
I guess maybe think in four-week increments. So if the goal would be November first, we should have that green light on October fifth. If the goal is December or November fifteenth, we need the green light on or around October fifteenth. If the green light is for December first, we'll need it on November first or that first meeting in November. The timeline pushes out really quickly when you start to think about the turnaround.
Yeah.
Uh, can I say something? I think some of the urgency is just around the excitement of the beginning of the year. I mean, of course, there are people who have wanted, like, really, really want their kids in the classroom all along and I totally understand that. And then there's also just, like, the year is starting, so it feels like things should be starting. I think that the more we can get the kids in front of their teachers while we're in the remote model, the more it will help the kids develop those relationships. We know that it's gonna be a while before we can move them into the hybrid. So let's, can we just make sure that while we're waiting for this, can we make sure that the kids are getting as many opportunities as possible to connect with their teachers and have those bonding moments and make sure that we're doing the best we can to get that up and going in the meantime?
I agree with that.
Can we move along?
Yes, we'd like to maybe table this discussion until our next meeting.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
A lot of things to think about between now and
Where do we end up on the financial piece? Are we just, what are we giving direction? What are we doing there? What, I, I don't, I'm confused on where we landed on financial, pushing that out too?
I think Annie has asked to see the, some if thens. Like, if we spend 1.7 million dollars, then what does it look like in three years? And even though people who have been on the school committee and on the finance committee for a long time might really understand what that looks like, I don't think the whole committee or definitely not the public understand what that looks like. So I think we need to see, if we spend 1.7 million dollars, where does that put us in years two, three, and four? If we spend $680,000, what does that look like for the next couple of years? And I think we need that in a presentation that makes it clear not only to us, but clear to the public who's watching so that people can really understand the financial system, situation of our school district. Because I don't think people understand that. We've got a lot of people who are kind of tuning in for the first time because this is a unprecedented, this is an unprecedented time that we're going through. So it's, it's new and we've been working, you know, those of us who have been on the school committee or watching this for a while, we understand the budget constraints that we're under all the time, but most people don't understand that. And, and we're in a regional school district and we don't get the same money that some other school districts get and we have additional expenses that other school districts don't have. So I think we need a budget presentation that really rolls us out and explains it very clearly.
We're on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School committee goals.
Oh, yay. Um, I know we're just doing a first read on these goals. And I think we, we don't have a curriculum goal on here. We don't, I think we should still have that goal about the vision of the graduate. Shouldn't that continue to be a goal on our
What, was it a goal for you or was it my goal?
I think it
I brought those two. We usually tie together.
I think it was a goal for us rolling up the curriculum to the, ensuring that the curriculum rolls up to the vision of the graduate. Wasn't that a goal for us?
I thought your goal
Sorry, can I advocate for simplicity? Because the reality is, we haven't gotten to any normal school committee business and we've been meeting all summer. So I just want to make sure that the goals that we set are the, reflect the work that we're actually gonna be doing. I would love to talk about vision of the graduate. I would love to talk about curriculum, but we just haven't gotten to it. And I don't know, I mean, are we gonna get there? I don't know.
I would like
I'm hoping.
I would like to keep vision of the graduate or curriculum or some kind of related goal on, on our goals.
Does anyone remember what it was last year?
I, I was carrying it. So this was, so labor management, because we went into last year having, and this is something that also got blown out of the water by COVID. We had on our list of priorities, the development of the TA contract, which still remains unresolved. So I think my last update was two-four and then the wheels kind of came off a month later. So we never really revisited. So I was gonna be focusing on a lot of the labor management relations and we were gonna be working on the contract for the teacher assistance, which was going to be a big project. And then our other big goal was, my goal was the strategic plan. And we had hit all of the early deadlines of October, November, and we had March date set up and published for the World Cafes, where we were going to be using the vision of the graduate as the focal point. They were going to be managed by a facilitator from the Creative Ed Foundation, who is gonna take groups, three different groups of mixed community, teachers, students, through the process of kind of visioning where we wanted to be, what what the vision of the graduate meant to them, what some of our strengths and weaknesses were. And then the facilitator was go, of those sessions was going to be handing us off to their coach, who was gonna be working with us over the summer. And remember, we had our school committee retreat established for July. It was gonna be the school committee team, meet of presidents, the admin team and our coach from Creative Ed. And we were gonna come out of that with our working goals for the strategic plan that we were going to be unveiling at this point this year. So that went into a complete holding pattern. We toyed with trying to do the World Cafes in an online town hall format. But that was really, we were looking at April and May and we were kind of in the thick of it and people were really hunkered down. And it didn't seem like a very forward-thinking time, so we just kind of put it on the back burner. So Annie, I would love to get back to this work because I think this is a good time for thinking about what can be. Because we pretty much, all of our, all of our norms are kind of shattered. We're not doing anything that we traditionally do. It wouldn't be a bad time to start reimagining what we can be in the future.
So how would you phrase that?
I would carry my goal forward and reset the timeline for this year.
So is it your goal, are you saying?
It was my goal last year.
Yeah.
We could tie it to a school committee goal as, I mean, we could have dual goals.
Yeah, I have last year, I think these are last year's goals set up, pulled up. I'm not sharing my screen. I've got too much stuff from work open. Uh, this is from fiscal year nineteen. It's develop and deliver a fiscally, find a fiscally responsible budget, rebuild the Manchester Memorial, successfully negotiate a contract, support implementation of programming that enhances our organization's cultural proficiency and promotes respect and appreciation for individual and cultural differences. And then target resources to supports, to support social emotional needs. So even our, even our educational goal wasn't necessarily curriculum focused. So really, it's kind of, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah, we've been carrying most of the programmatic goals and the curriculum goals per se in the district improvement plan. So those are the, those are the updates. We, we kind of lay out for you what our focus areas are at the beginning of the year and we give you an update in June. That also didn't happen. But they're typically tied to the strategic plan and the strategic plan hit its endpoint. So those district goals have just not been, they haven't really been updated in the past two years and they haven't been very robust. They've been kind of finishing up old business. So I do think it's important, if we can find our way to putting the strategic plan development back on the radar screen for this year, it would be really important.
I think that would be great because I think we all work better when we have some positive things to focus on. And if all we think about is COVID for the next year, we might all go completely insane.
I think we also saw it as an opportunity to lay out kind of an aspirational plan that could be tied to our next override. Our last override was much discussed to be a, a needs-based ask to just kind of replenish our resources because we had been using our reserves to manage our operational budget. I think at the time, we had a lot of discussion of whether or not we should be asking for more to help us go further and achieve some of our bigger goals. So I, I certainly can't decide on my own how we're gonna frame it, but I, I would, I would be starting to advocate after seeing how this next year or two develops that this, it would be important for us to try and establish some, some long-term aspirations and then try to fund it with the budget. You know, before all of this hit, so much of our discussion was centering around, we just can't keep living hand to mouth. You know, we've been carrying the math coach on, on the goals, on the budget goals list for years. And we just don't ever have the extra funds to build that next level of support. So at some point, we're gonna have to either agree that we're gonna offer a program commensurate with our budget or we're going to start to ask for a budget to, to support the program we want. So I kind of feel like until we can come up with a more current strategic plan, we don't really know what to ask for or how to make our argument for it.
Annie, will you read that goal that implies the curriculum?
Support implementation of programming that enhances our organization's cultural proficiency and promotes respect and appreciation for individual and cultural differences. So we're kind of addressing that with the SCAR and the resolution that we had, which was, you know, culturally, but, but, but Pam, you're saying begin the strategic planning process? Is that what we're, oh.
I mean, we've been building toward it. We have like three years of third-party reviews on all aspects of our programming. All of this was kind of funneling up to the framework for the future.
So to finish the strategic, strategic planning process with delivery of final plan in when? In May? Twenty twenty-one? It's gotta be Sparkle.
Yeah, let's go for May. We can always amend.
Right.
I mean, we have to get out of the, we, we need to get out of the COVID quagmire, I think, before we can really start to, to focus on it.
Okay.
Cause it, but yes. I would say May with kind of a backup that we revert back to the plan we had for last year, which was to utilize our summer workshop.
So you want to say summer twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, sure. Cause that was gonna be kind of the eight-hour event of kind of processing through it. And I don't know where we get the whole collective stakeholder, all of the different stakeholder people to be able to commit that amount of time during the school year.
Okay.
We have something in there about aligning the curriculum to that?
Do we ever do that?
It's not what you do.
Right. We're budget and, we're budget and governance.
That drives the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans, which get brought to the school committee for review and approval. So it's kind of, it's the head document that then trickles down and informs all of the other documents. That's why the plans are starting to be, like, if you go back to twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, those plans are very tightly aligned with a, with a lot of cross. You can see kind of cross-referenced goals and common goals throughout. But then we, as we got into the out-years of the strategic plan, different schools completed different things at different rates. So then everyone kind of started down some slightly independent paths until we, we brought the literacy piece in as a common. So I do think it's important that we get this in relatively short timeline. I would say we strive for May. We use the summer as the fallback date in case this doesn't resolve itself fast enough to get us on the pathway. But I think it's a really important piece that we need to focus our work, all, our collective work.
So, uh, I don't know how much we were gonna talk about this, Sarah. But, uh, we'll, we should talk about prioritization of these. And I want to edit the third one.
Yeah. It's getting a little late and I think we were just planning to have a first read of the goals tonight.
Yep. Okay, so I just made, I just made those edits to that and then I'm gonna tinker with the third bullet a little bit. And then, um, and then we'll bring it back.
Yeah, and then everybody has these now to look at and think about and we can have some more discussion at the next meeting.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything else on the agenda?
Yes, there's one other thing.
Calendar.
Calendar.
So we still need to have a discussion with association on it, just to formally close the loop. Was there any thought on the idea of moving the half-days, which are traditionally Wednesdays, to Mondays in anticipation of the hybrid, which would be four days a week, Tuesday through Friday, with Monday as the remote-only day and possibly a shutdown day?
That made a lot of sense.
I do too.
I will take it back. We'll talk with Mita to make sure they have the same feeling about it. I know they're all been a little swamped getting ready for school and we'll have this complete. But if, if you guys will endorse that switch, which is really the only change to that calendar, we can go ahead and try to finalize it sooner rather than later. Or if you want to empower the negotiation team to clean up any last-minute details that may pop up.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Somebody made a remark to me today that now that we know how to do hybrid, that we would never need to take a snow day. Which I thought was a horrible thing to say because I loved snow days. But, um, just, you don't have to answer it now, but I thought that was, you know, tragic.
Can I ask a calendar question? I know this is gonna get out as soon as possible, but what is the first date that parents are looking at some sort of a, a unusual circumstance for? Do we, do we know? I mean, is there gonna be at least a couple of weeks' notice before we have that first half-day so families can plan?
Yes, let me, let me pull it up and I will see what the first day is. I want to say the second or third week of October.
Okay.
But typically, the kids
I think that's reasonable.
In what you were saying, Pam, the kids would be home anyway. They just wouldn't be logged on in the afternoon. Yeah, behind this, right?
Yes.
Yeah, still for families trying to take advantage of not having school. To go do something.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
October, correct?
Yep. So I'd like to get it out next week, which is why I'm asking, if you don't have any issues, I know where to go to make sure. have any issues, I know where to go to make sure it meets muster with the other half that's supposed to weigh in on this, and then we can just get it out.
That's fine with me leaving it up to the
Close, we can try to reschedule it, too. Or at least just put out a notice to everybody that that day is coming. Like, if it starts to drag a little bit at the end of the week. So, okay, that's a good heads-up, Teresa. Thank you.
I think that's it for agenda. Does anybody have anything else?
I thought we were looking at school committee calendar, too.
Oh.
Come on.
Done that, didn't I?
I did the homework, okay? Eric?
Trying, must have been trying to get my life organized that day. School committee calendar. Were there any recommendations, suggestions, changes?
I would love to have some normal school committee discussions about stuff that's not about hybrid and remote.
Well, yeah, I just want, yeah, like, how's, just the regular things that we have.
Yeah.
Which will be different, because we're in a different situation, but
Right.
How's it going? How's the curriculum going?
So on the bottom, if you look at it, typically, we never finished the annual focus last year, which were the school spotlight. So the middle school and the high school never went, never got to go. So we could go back and pick up where we left off. We have strategic plan development, which could become part of our, I don't know how much it's a meeting-to-meeting discussion, as much as it is, is having those World Cafes, and then kind of distilling that information into goals. So that, that may not be like a meeting-to-meeting type of thing. And then our cycle for this year would have been K-12 reviews and departmental reviews. So like the K-12 STEM, K-12 art, K-12 music, and I think we would also have been up for, like, the athletics review, or the special ed review, which is more like a financial review along with the programming. I would love to add those in. I don't know when we're going to have the bandwidth.
I think that's going to be sort of such a, a weird thing to do in this super strange year, to do like the sped review or the athletics review, when we're only having such crazy times. But, you know, and I know, nobody's going to be surprised to hear this, but I'd love near the end of the year to have a check-in on the new literacy program and hear how it's going in its first year of implementation.
And I don't think we need to wait all the way till the end of the year. I think we could do some, some periodic curriculum check-ins, not, not a problem.
Yeah, and also on math, isn't the big review of the math, our vertical alignment happening-ish? Or starting?
It was supposed to be starting. I don't know where we are at with it, because of the intensity of, in focus on just getting ready for
Yeah.
For this component. So I think what we should do is go back and try to hit, so the same conversation we're having here about how to bring back some normalcy into the work that we're doing, our leadership meetings are the same. It's, it's a laundry list of COVID issues, right, in, in trying to solve the problems of the day. So how do we return to some sense of normal schedule, normal planning, normal activity? Is it possible? It might be worth a check, you know. When I'm thinking about the program spotlights, a lot of it has to do with the climate of the building and what goes on there. So I don't know how applicable that is to the current. So maybe what we could do for next time is just think about what, how do we take what we would typically be looking at this year, which is kind of some departmental reviews, following up on the program spotlights, and make it kind of COVID compliant? You know, what would be appropriate to hear from the schools about what would help you to understand what's going on in our current context from the principals? And we can try to frame some, some feedback sessions or some presentations around that.
Yeah, I think it would be great to hear, like, sometimes when the teachers come in and they show what they're doing, or what the students are doing, like, I would love to have a, a clear picture of what the instruction looks like.
So maybe instead of the program spotlights, it's a kind of, it's late, so I'm not going to come up with something catchy, but it's kind of like how we're making it work in this new environment. You know, kind of what the highlights are, what some of the obstacles are. So we kind of get the teacher voice, that school team voice on how they're attacking this issue, how they're making it work.
I think that's going to be really important, Pam, because even more so than hybrid indicators to all the conversation we've committed, we've committed to a model, and we're beginning that and moving it. And quite frankly, I, I think it's going to be really good, and I'm sure it's, it's been reassuring to receive kind of the regular feedback of schools starting, and how things are working, and having students back on campus. So to get to the normalcy, I almost would love to have that, some semblance of the short-term normalcy of what's going on this week. Hey, here's what we figured out. Hey, here's where we, this is probably the biggest revolution in American secondary education happening in the next three or four weeks, that we're here to witness, sitting in a ringside seat. So, yeah, I'd like to hear that. And I, and I think also some of, some of what can the school committee, or what does the community, what should we be, is there feedback for us on, from the teachers, on what this model would look like, and how, how thinking may change, or what to be aware of?
I think Sarah was the mastermind that came up with the thematic question for last year, so maybe we can present it as a team challenge.
Yeah.
So if the school committee wants to
We are all lifelong learners. Yeah, especially the school committee and the teachers are the first steps, so.
So if anybody kind of can come up with how to, like, a question or a theme to frame the ask for the schools, that would be helpful. I'll think on it, too.
Well, it could be like a semi-regular check-in on the remote and the hybrid, and basically how it's going at the different levels. I mean, I don't think it needs to be that complicated. It can just be pretty basic.
Okay.
Even plus Delta, what, what are things that we're seeing that better than we anticipated, or that we hadn't realized? You know, what would we change, aside from the obvious? And also some element of celebration.
I think we should think about this for next time. I don't think
Yeah.
Okay. Talk tomorrow, everybody.
Thanks.
Wonderful first day of school.
It's going to be great.
Yes.
Thanks to everybody. This has been a hell of a lot of work. It's, it was great to walk by Essex Elementary this morning and just see a really great group of teachers excited about what's going on. So they're glad to see the kids come back, so. Did you make a motion to adjourn?
No, we have comment.
What? We have a comment?
Well, it says school committee comment. I'm waiting so patiently to speak at only corporate times. Comment, I have to say, tomorrow we start school, and for, I'm sorry that there's so few parents listening compared to the beginning, but for the parents that are still listening, I want to put a plug out there for school councils. That school council is where you get involved with things. So when things like task forces are, are assembled, that's where those, those people come from. And school council almost always needs more people. And so I just really want to put out there that if you're interested in having a voice at a table, that's a good place to start. So reach out to the building principal of whatever school, every school has one, and see if there is space on your school council. And I expect that the meetings are virtual this year, or at least for now. So it should be a lot more accessible than, than maybe in the past. And I just, given the, the really fervent amount of communication we've had from, from parents over the, the summer, I, I really hope that they're able to, that people are able to take that energy and, and channel it toward having a seat at the table in their school council.
So I started on school council, and I think probably several of the school committee members did. It's a great way to get involved with your school. So definitely. Any other school committee comment? Motion to adjourn from anyone?
No, moved.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Eric? Shannon?
Yes.
Matt? Ken?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
All right, and I'm a yes.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.